Hello and welcome. This is the regular session of the Town of South Kingstown Town Council Meeting. The date is Monday, April 12th. The time is 7:30 PM. Dale, can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Now Dale, may we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Council Vice President Eddie.
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman O'Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Moyley.
Here.
All members present.
Okay. Next, we have approval of the minutes of previous meetings from the work session of March 10th and March 22nd, 2010. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the work session minutes from March 10th and March 22nd, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the regular session from March 22nd, 2010.
I move approval of the regular session minutes for March 22nd, 2010.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. A resolution granting a holiday sales license to the Gift Emporium, 99 Fortin Road, Suite 110, Kingston, Rhode Island, 02881, subject to approval by the Kingston Fire Chief. The application is by Nicole Molly, 29 Lexington Avenue from West Warwick, and this is a new license. Is Ms. Molly here to talk about? Please come forward to the microphone. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about the Gift Emporium?
It's a small gift shop. It's about 250 square feet at the Kingston Emporium on the campus of URI, opening on May 1st.
Okay. And do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're going to be selling?
A lot of, obviously, gift items, candles, pillows, jewelry, art prints, small things like that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Nicole?
Are they going to be largely URI, appealing to that age group?
Yes.
Yeah. That would make sense there.
You said 250 square feet. Is that part of another business or is that a standalone shop?
It's in a strip mall.
Oh, right. But someone hasn't divided another business and you're taking part of the property?
No. It's a separate unit.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
How long have you been in this business or is this your first time?
First time.
Good for you. Good luck.
Thank you.
What are your hours?
Haven't really decided yet, but probably 10 to 7 most days, except for the weekends, it would be 10 to 5.
Candles and pillows, is that good for exam time?
Yeah.[222.81][222.81](Laughter).
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Kathy, then I'll make a motion to approve Resolution A.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next is License Item B, a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Veridegress, 355 Main Street, Wakefield, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent, and the application is by Robert Blot from Hope Valley. And this is a new. Is anybody here to speak on this item? No, please come forward. Are you Mr. Blot?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I want you to tell us a little bit about, I don't want to, is it Vertigris?
Vertigri.
Vertigri, okay. My French is a little long. I'm sorry. Tell us a little bit about your business.
Antiques, home furnishings, paintings, and collectibles, basically.
Anybody have any questions?
I've had a chance to stop by a few times. Very impressive and we certainly hope they'll be a long-term significant retail business here in town.
Who was in there just before you were?
The gentleman's name was Phil. I don't know his last name, but he had kind of a consignment store in that space.
Okay, I'm just trying to place where 355 is. Yeah, thank you.
I was recently in there and you really have some nice items, very unique.
Oh, thank you so much.
Very nice. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
And do you operate, have you done this business before in any other location?
Yes, I have.
And where is that?
Most recently in Richmond, but all the way back to Providence, I had a store on Governor's Street and on Wickenden Street.
Oh, wow.
Back in the 90s.
Very good.
He's brought good product, but more reasonable prices than you get on Wickenden Street.[356.12][356.12](Laughter). Sorry. Anyway.
I move approval of License B.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Next is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Exeter Marathon in the Town of South Kingstown on Saturday, April 17th, at 8:00 AM to the Narragansett Running Association, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event and the amount specified by the risk manager and the State Traffic Commission approval proceeds to benefit the Association's Summer Youth Track Series. The application is by Michael Tomaro, President of the Narragansett Running Association. This is new. Is Michael here? Well, this kind of tells us a lot about what you're doing, but if you want to tell us a little bit more.
Well, it's a new race, so this is the first time we're doing it, and it's going to poke out into South Kingstown a little bit. It's going to start at Yagu and come down Route 2, and then a little bit on Waits Corner Road and Fairgrounds Road and turn around and go back. I had a communication with John Schock about safety and he recommended that I hire a police detail, which I did, so there'll be a South Kingstown officer down near Waits Corner Road, and everything's all set with the other two towns.
Okay, good. Anybody have any questions for Michael? Polly?
Is the Summer Youth Track Series, is that going to be training young people to run track? Is that the?
Yeah, our track series is in its, will be in its sixth year, and we're going to, it's a five-week series that starts the first Monday after the Fourth of July every summer. We have it at the Narragansett High School Track, and last summer we served almost 900 different children, and most of them were from South Kingstown, actually.
Thank you.
Is this going to be a marathon that qualifies a runner for another marathon, say like the Boston Marathon or the Ocean State Marathon?
Yes. Actually, you have to qualify to run the Exeter Marathon, which is one of the unique things about it, which has generated a lot of interest. There's actually a story about it in Runner's World and CNN.com and Running Times, and it's been very exciting getting this going. But yes, if you wanted to use it as a qualifier for the Boston Marathon, you could do that. But in order to run the Exeter Marathon, you actually have slightly more stringent standards than the Boston qualifying standards.
Really? So like for Ocean State Marathon, I don't think you have to qualify, right?
No, you don't. Most you don't. In fact, this is the only race, I think, in the country that you actually have to qualify for.
Wow.
So the word sanctioned is part of this?
Yeah, sanctioned, yeah, US ATF, US Track and Field, there will be US ATF sanctioned, yeah.
How many runners do you think you're going to have?
I think I'm going to have about 75, which is small, but it'll grow.
It will grow, absolutely.
It's a long distance.
It's a long way, yeah.
Come on, you can do it.
Yeah, and a car.[557.12][557.12](Laughter).
Do I have a motion?
I move approval of License C. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright. Next, we're done with the new businesses, so, excuse me, the licenses. So next, I think we're going to make a motion to move forward, New Business Items A and B, if that's possible.
I move, I'll move that we change the agenda to go to number 13, New Business Items A and B, prior to the public hearings.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So what we have with the new business item A is a resolution. This is a, I'm very happy to be doing this. This is for a lovely lady who has been part of our Recreation Commission for many years. This is a resolution, and maybe I should have Janice come forward and let everybody see you, Janice, don't be shy.[635.12][635.12](Laughter). This is a resolution recognizing Janice Pachaska as a recipient of the 2010 Volunteer of the Year Award from the Rhode Island Recreation and Parks Association, and it states as follows, "Janice Pachaska, whereas Janice Pachaska has been awarded the 2010 Setimo Steamer Richie Award by the Rhode Island Parks and Recreation Association for outstanding volunteer efforts in support of parks and recreation initiatives and development on a local, state, and national level, and whereas, under Commissioner Pachaska's guidance and leadership, the Department of Parks and Recreation has received national accreditation through the NRPA, opened a nature center whose mission it is to educate the community on the importance of guarding and protecting our natural resources, seen the development and expansion of the William C. O'Neill Bike Path, seen the development of the town's first dog park, seen the development of the Green Hill Park, West Kingston Park, Broad Rock Park, and Curtis Corner Playfields, seen programs and special events expand to over 200 offerings annually, seen the formalization of the Friends of South Kingstown Parks and Recreation, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that provides financial support to the department specifically for its scholarship and program, and whereas Commissioner Pachaska has served on the South Kingstown Recreation Commission for 18 years and is a chairperson of the Commission in 2002 and 2003, and whereas since 2003, Commissioner Pachaska has served on the National Recreation and Parks Association Board of Trustees as a citizen member and is currently co-chair of the Public Policy Committee, and whereas as a member of the Friends of South Kingstown Parks and Recreation Association since 1999, Commissioner Pachaska has been a tireless advocate for local youth involvement, supporting and contributing to the Friends Scholarship Fund, so that all South Kingstown children can enjoy the benefit from the many recreational opportunities the town offers. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council, the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby extend our congratulations to Janice Pachaska and recognize her as a recipient of the Rhode Island Parks and Recreation Association 2010 Setimo Steamer Richie Award for her outstanding volunteer efforts. So, Janice, that's not all. So I have that all in a nice folder. I'd like to also introduce Susan Cooper from the Recreation, the Recreation Director from Newport and the member of the Rhode Island Recreation Parks and Association, chairperson of the RIPA Award Selection Committee, is also here to present a nice plaque. So, Susan?
Janice, on behalf of the Rhode Island Recreation and Park Association, I'd like to give you the highest award that we provide for a volunteer, and the reason I am doing this this evening is because Janice was representing the state of Rhode Island in Washington, DC, and meeting with all our congressional leaders on our behalf, so that is why I'm very pleased to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.[815.75][815.75](Applause). And if you'd like to say a few words.
I would just like to thank the State Association for giving me this special honor, and I also want to say it's been a privilege to be on the Commission since 1992, and I'm very proud of the parks and recreation that we have in our community, and I'm very glad to work to make them as special as they are. So thank you for giving me this opportunity as well.
Yes, Janice, thank you for everything you've done, and I see a lot of our people from the Parks and Recreation are here to support you, so.
It's been great that they're here, and also my family's here from California, my son, my three grandsons.
Very nice. They've done a great job.[890.12][890.12](Applause). Thank you very much, Janice, for everything. Very cute. Very nice. And next we have, oh, well, do I need a motion to approve that one?
Motion to approve.
New Business Item A.
Do I have to approve it? Yes, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve New Business Item A.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Can't take it back, anybody, so.[923.12][923.12](Laughter). All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're going to move, bye-bye. Next is B, is a resolution adopting a proclamation designating the bike path in the Village of Peastale and surrounding area as the Peastale Art Park, as follows. Is somebody here from the Peastale?
I think Leslie's here.
Oh, Leslie, I thought I saw Leslie coming in. Come on up. Nancy, yes, come on up. Come on up. Everybody who's part of it can certainly come up.
And Karen Zions also on the board.
Oh, Karen, okay, yes, yes. How are you? So.
And Nancy Dean.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see her come in.[973.43][973.43](Laughter). She's one of the artists, actually. Yes, yes. Well, so we're going to make the proclamation now, and then we'll show the movie at the end of the new business items, okay? We figure we move this forward, okay?
Great.
While we're doing proclamations, so, to you ladies, for the Peastale Art Park, whereas several art pieces on display within the Village of Peastale, and soon plaques will be attached identifying the artist as well as the name of the piece, and whereas the unofficial art park has attracted both local residents and visitors, and it is in the intention of the Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization Incorporated to expand the artwork in the Peastale to continue to attract more visitors and artists to the area, and whereas the Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization Incorporated has formally requested that the South Kingstown Town Council designate the bike path and surrounding village area as the Peastale Art Park to enhance both cultural and economic development within the Village of Peastale, and whereas the Town Council recognizes that having an official designated art park will attract and encourage economic and cultural opportunities. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council, the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby designate the bike path in the Village of Peastale and surrounding area as the Peastale Art Park as a stimulus for economic and cultural prosperity.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Why don't you come forward, Leslie, and I'll present you with the.
Oh, I get something, Kathy.[1056.12][1056.12](Laughter).
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve?
I move approval of the Peastale Art Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to the public hearings. Public hearing, Item A, is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Appendix A Use Code descriptions, that would amend Use Code 55 Retail Trade to define and limit firearm sales conducted at the sporting goods stores and establish a new Use Code 55.7 Retail Trade of Firearms, and amend Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 301, Schedule of Use Regulations Table, to permit Use Code 55.7 by right only within the commercial highway, CH and CD Commercial Downtown Zoning Districts, as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here too. Okay, and we have any correspondence to that?
Yes, we have a communication dated March 10th, 2010, from the South Kingstown Planning Board, recommending the zoning amendments as printed on the agenda, and incorporating findings of fact and consistency with the Comprehensive Community Plan, findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning. And we have other communications in opposition to this amendment, and they are as follows. A petition against submitted by Richard A. Pike and signed by 251 persons, of which 97 are residents of South Kingstown. Another communication in opposition and the rest are also Ron, from Ron Pratt, Roy Kimble, Dick Souza, Lawrence Gutch, Lawson Durfee, Fred Miller, David Raymond, Robert Dupress, Glenn Nonemaker, Thomas Riley, Paul Missaps, Brett Sheldon, Steve Moss, Louis Pellopida, Richard Case, David Souza, Alexander Bond, James Thalvey, Frederick Channing, Peter Pyhon, M.W. Grace, Richard LaPlante, and John McCormick.
Thank you, Dale. Alright, I think we're going to have Vin Murray speak on this, so Vin, if you'd like to come forward.
As the council will recall, this matter in a different form was before you on January the 11th. Proposed amendments were under consideration at that time that would have, one, amended Use Code 55, which is the general retail trade use code, to specify and delimit how much a sporting goods store could be devoted to gun sales and still be considered a gun store. The Use Code 55.7, which was a new use code to be considered at that point, which was the retail trade of firearms, up to 10,000 square feet gross leasable floor area. And then there were also amendments relating to allowing such uses in the commercial highway and the commercial downtown zone by special use permit, which requires a trip to the zoning Board of Review for such consideration. Also, at that point, there was some standards suggested relative to the standards that would be looked at or criteria for the special use permit issuance, and those related to the proximity of the Use Code 55.7, the retail trade of firearms, to schools or houses of worship, and there was a 200-foot perimeter within which such uses would not be considered. Following the public hearing that evening, the council, I guess, essentially voted to table the matter and refer it back to the planning board with the specific instruction that the Use, the Use Code 55.7, the new one under consideration, be considered as an allowance by right, so it would not require a trip to the zoning board for such a use to be established. The council also stipulated that the standards relative to proximity of the use to a church or a school be deleted, and further, the council, I suggested the planning board consider not allowing such use in the commercial neighborhood zoning district. Now, the planning board took the matter up in their February, I think it was 28th meeting, and as, excuse me, a work session for a general discussion item, and ultimately directed that the matter be written up basically as suggested in the council's re-referral, and the planning board then on the 9th of March voted to formalize their recommendations in this regard, as referred to by the town clerk on the correspondence item that was dated the 10th of March. What the amendments before the council in this public hearing this evening would do are the following. One, they would make an amendment to Use Code 55, the general retail trade use code, and by inserting language in there that would define a sporting goods shop as having less than or equal to 25% of its gross leasable floor area devoted to gun sales. If the, if the percentage were greater, it would be considered a standalone gun sales unit, and therefore would be under the new Use Code 55.7. 55.7 discusses the Use Code as noted in the agenda this evening, and that would be more than 25% of its gross leasable floor area to the sale of firearms, ammunition, ammunition components, and hunting and shooting equipment. The Use Code excludes, would exclude paintball-type guns, ammunition, propellants, and gear, and is not intended to regulate collectors, collectors of antiques, replicas, incurios, shooting clubs, and the like. The third part of the proposed amendments before the council as part of this public hearing would establish those areas where such, where Use Code 55.7, the new Use Code, could be established, and those areas are the two zoning districts within the town, and that would be the commercial downtown zoning district, which is found largely in central, middle of Peastale and Old Wakefield, and the commercial highway zoning district, which is found generally along Dale Collier Four Corners, north and south towards Narragansett, along Kingstown Road, towards Narragansett, towards the university, and also Old Tower Hill Road running up easterly towards Route 1. There's also a small area of commercial highway zoning located in and around on Kingstown Road, just northerly of Soggett Tucket Road. On both sides of the road, there's several parcels that are commercially highway zoned. So though, according to the suggested amendments, those are the only areas within the town where a new use under this Use Code could be established. The establishment would be by right, it would be limited to no more than 10,000 square feet, which is our typical standard for our breakpoint in our zoning, so it's treated similarly. Again, the sporting goods establishments could devote up to 25% of their area, and they would be permitted, I guess, not just those two zones, but also in the commercial neighborhood zoning district. There was some discussion when we met on, back in January, about the commercial neighborhood not being perhaps suitable for this type of use in a general sense, and those zoning districts in the town are just some areas to note where they are located. It's, bear with me for one moment. There's some small areas scattered hither and yon in the town. There's a small area on High Street that was owned commercial neighborhood. The Route 1 and 138 intersection on the westerly side, north and south of the intersection, is owned commercial neighborhood. There's an area on Columbia Street, zoned as such. The YMCA parcel at 20.6 acres is actually zoned in this district. Mattoonik Beach area, Fortin Road, Briar Lane, and the Emporium at the university, and I believe there's even one or two lots down to Perryville that are, lie within this district. The commercial neighborhood zone is intended, according to its definition in the zoning ordinance, to be a lesser intensity zoning district, to provide, in part, says, small-scale retail establishments to provide local business service to residential neighborhoods throughout the town, in part. But that's the recommendation that we forward to Town Council tonight, based on the planning board's consideration and on the second go-around, so to speak, following the direction from the January 11th public hearing that concluded, and then here we are again this evening. So I could certainly try to answer any questions. I think it's a fairly straightforward set of amendments. I know there's been lots of discussion and communication in the community about it, and there's a number of people here that I'm sure would like to speak on the matter, but I could answer any questions the council may have at this point.
Any questions for Vin regarding this change? Jim?
Vin, the SMD, was firearm sales part of those industries not allowed up there? Both SMDs, we might as well get to both of them.
Well, Kingstown Road SMD, it doesn't change, the zoning is what it is. There are certain prohibited uses up there. I don't believe something specific, we don't have a Use Code in our ordinance now for this, so I would say that the Kingstown Road SMD would not be included. The Route 1 Special Management District, this Use Code would only be prohibited if it were listed as a prohibited use, because the Route 1 SMD has, everything that's not listed as prohibited is permitted.
Right, and I just, I forgot to get the SMD booklet. I didn't know if this was prohibited or allowed.
Well, as I mentioned, we do not have a Use Code currently, so sporting goods sales, under the current zoning, a shop selling guns could be located in the Route 1 Special Management District.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Vin?
I have a few, Vin. When you say the Dale Collier area, you're talking about all of Main Street and Wakefield, basically, right down to?
Well, what's owned commercial downtown, yeah, it basically would start.
Down to Wakeham Mews?
Yeah, actually, on that end, the. Yeah, actually, on that end, the commercial downtown, the Larchwood is zoned commercial downtown, then it extends basically nearly to Citizens Bank in that area going towards, that's commercial downtown.
Does it go all the way to Route 1?
No, then there's a transition where, right at, around the Citizens Bank area on both sides of Main Street, then you transition to commercial highway, which is a more intensive-
So that, with this new, with this new ordinance, that would be allowable area also, so-
Correct.
Beyond citizens. So it would basically go all the way from Route 1 down to like the Larchwood would be?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of parcels in that-
And then it would go off from there.
Yeah, and there's some very small parcels and some residential uses, but in theory, yes, yeah.
And with this, with this change, it would just prohibit a store that was only selling firearms and the like from going in areas of commercial neighborhoods. But if it were a sporting goods store that had, say, 25 percent of their sales of goods were for firearms, ammunition, and the like, then they would be allowed to go into commercial neighborhoods. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. It would just be a sole practitioner under the proposed, you know, if it was totally devoted or more than 25 percent, then it would not be an allowed use under the commercial neighborhood zoning district.
And what did you say, South County Commons is zoned as?
Well, that's a special management district, and there, our regulations are a little different insofar as there's a list of prohibited activities or uses that can't be established there. Other than that list, whatever's in the zoning allowances can be established.
That's all. Okay, any other questions for Vin? No? Okay.
So, Vin, just to be clear, since we're looking at a lot of what we have right now, the High Street CN, commercial neighborhood spot currently occupied by an arms shop, they are grandfathered in?
Well, they're legitimate and legal under the current zoning. If this zoning amendment were to pass, they would be, you know, legal nonconforming or grandfathered, yes. So they, you know, and they could convey that use to, that would run with the land and to subsequent owners or whatever, so.
That was gonna be a question, then, it does run with the land?
Because I do understand that particular facility has been up for sale as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, but at least that business, though, does run with the land.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to clarify again that when we had the, last time we met, that the zone of inhibition, I guess, that we were talking about through the, where the schools and the churches, the houses of worship, that has been removed.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, just want to make that clear.
Not on the table, not subject of tonight's hearing.
Right, okay, all right. So, Vin, stay close in case anybody has any questions, but we're gonna open this up to the public.
Okay, not going anywhere.
Anybody else has any questions?
I just want to say one more thing. I mean, we're not limiting anyone's right to open up a firearm shop. We're just saying where they can do it. We're not saying, I mean, basically, that's what we're doing. We just want to keep it to certain areas.
Which is what zoning does with land, with land uses generally, so.
Right, and that's done with other kinds of businesses, like the sale of alcohol or certain things.
Yeah, yeah, residential, you know, the full gamut.
Just hadn't been addressed before really by the town, and it's just more of a-
No, not at all. It was always considered under the general heading of sporting goods.
Right.
You know, going back to when Wakefield Arms was where the purple cow is now to be a Rhode Islander type of thing, so.
Yeah. Gotcha, gotcha. So it's really a bit of housekeeping from planning and zoning to try to?
Right, it's more specific than we've had in the past, what's being suggested, so.
Correct, okay, all right. Again, any other questions from the council? Nope.
Kathy, just to be very clear, the current commercial highway, CH, and commercial downtown, CD, those are by right. Anyone can open a firearm store, it can be 100 percent of their business, but they have a right to open that store.
Yes, under the amendments, if they are successful, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Keep wanting to go to the public, but, you know, we'll move to the public then. So anybody from the public, this is obviously a public hearing, so you please come forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you, my name is Mark Zachariah. I'm actually a resident of North Kingstown.
I recognize that name from your political signs, yes.
Thank you, thank you. You may recall the communication that I had with the council on the 17th of January, and I would compliment the council on the changes that have occurred to the ordinance since that time. I would still ask the council to, you know, consider carefully restrictions on a, the sale of a product that is already very highly restricted, and that further restrictions might be viewed as being unnecessarily focused on a small community of enthusiasts. In the end, there's a constitutional right involved, and I would say that you might want to be explicit about the fact that you are, you are not calling into question the confidence that you have in your citizens, because I believe you'll find that gun use, and as you yourself said, gun ownership in the town is not being affected at all, but merely you want to take a, an approach to zoning control over this particular type of retail trade. And by, by being explicit about that, I think you will avoid a certain amount of criticism by others that might misunderstand. So the, you know, you, if you feel that you have to implement this ordinance, I would suggest that the headline be that the citizens' rights have been improved, not restricted.
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Nope, nope, anybody else, please come forward, state your name for the record. Oh, please come forward, yep, you're more than welcome, come forward.
Good evening, my name is Richard Pike, and I did present you with a petition that was signed by 251 members who have visited two of the local gun shops that we have, and I'm not really sure if you received my cover letter in your packet, but gun shops are destination shops, people come from miles around, they do business when they're in town. I think a further zoning restriction on any business, let alone gun shops, just hampers the ability of small business to operate in an already difficult climate. I'm urging you to reject this based on many issues, but the least of which is, there have been no problems with either gun shop that I'm aware of. There was a gun shop in Peacedale years ago. I've never heard of any problems with that gun shop. It's not a nuisance-type business, they're not open late at night, they don't create traffic, they don't create noise. It seems to me that you're trying to stifle one particular part of this business. If a sporting goods store were to open, there's no restriction if they're not selling more than 25 percent of guns, so let's just assume they're doing, they're doing a blockbuster business and they're selling 1,000 soccer shoes. They could also sell 100 guns if it weren't more than 25 percent, and they would have no restriction in these zones. However, someone like one of the local gun shops who may be selling four or five guns a week, you want to put restrictions on. You prohibit, and I've already heard that they're going to be grandfathered in, but grandfathered in just makes them a nonconforming use, so if they want to enlarge, if they, if they want to do something with their business, they have to come and ask the blessing and get the permission of the council. I don't see any reason that this is necessary. I have not heard of an issue in the town. Certainly Dale just read off the number of people who objected to it. I know the Chamber of Commerce itself objected to it. I frankly don't see any reason whatsoever to pass this restrictive zoning when it has been no problems, no public outcry, and yet all of the correspondence that you've received has been in opposition to you passing this zoning amendment. So again, as I spoke once before in January, each little zoning improvement that you pass further restricts the ability of small business to operate in the town of South Kingstown. I would suggest that maybe the council and the planning board look to change zoning laws that would improve the business climate here and could attract more business in town instead of restricting business. Again, I think that's pretty much, I pretty much have covered everything, but I'm, again, urging you to vote against this zoning amendment. I don't see that it does anybody any good. I see this targeted basically at one business in the community, and I don't see the purpose for it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pike.
My name is Leonard A. Kowoko, the owner of Freedom Sports and Arms on High Street. I own the firearms business, but I do more than just sell firearms. I've been there a year come this May, and in that year, I educated more women on handguns. Matter of fact, I'm having a class this Thursday night, and you should attend it to see what goes on at a firearms store. So I do more than just sell firearms. I educate the public for free. Firearms are dangerous in the wrong hands, but Hank and I could tell you, we do not sell firearms to people that don't know how to handle them. And in my time at High Street, we've cleared up some stolen guns here in the town of South Kingstown, in my shop, and I imagine Hank did also. We never had a problem in either gun shop. We did help a young lady at Freedom Sports and Arms who was badly beaten by her boyfriend. She found refuge in my gun shop, and I was proud of that. So as a firearms business, you're discriminating against me. Prior to me moving in there, there was a head shop. As an ex-police man, that shop was not good whether it was in a commercial or in a residential commercial area. So I think we kind of bettered the neighborhood from what it was. We painted the building, we have a legitimate business. I have a book here that the whole council should read on safety and security information for federal firearms licensees. People that come into the stores, mine and Hank's, go through a vigorous background check. And if we think that background check does not fit that person, even if they do pass it, we don't pass them. We don't sell them the firearm. A year ago, Ms. McEntee said that she works for the Attorney General's Office, and a lot of crime due to firearms. It's true, there's more people killed by knives, baseball bats, than firearms. So what do we do? Do we restrict places that sell knives? So as a business owner here in Wakefield, I feel you're discriminating against me and my income for my family. And if I want to expand, I can't do that. I have to come and get the blessing of the planning board, the town council. Thank you.
Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, my name is Arthur Gautier. I'm a resident here of South Kingstown. I also am a commercial real estate broker. My office happens to be in Northern Ireland, but I live here. I found this, I don't know what precipitated this, but I can tell you that when you're talking about a small business, the small businesses like where we have here before us, there's no doubt that to be restricted in any way affects their livelihood. And when you have a place of covenant on a piece of property that restricts a particular use, like grandfathered in, well, somewhere along the way, that property is going to be sold, there's gonna be changes made. And I will tell you, it affects value, I can tell you this as a commercial broker. These are the types of issues that should be considered along with everything else that I'm sure that you're considering here this evening. But I will also tell you that there isn't, as far as the covenants are concerned, as I said, I don't know what brought this on, but I can tell you that it must be a good reason, because without it, people are going to be affected financially and otherwise. And I just cannot see, unless there was some grave problems associated with this industry in this township, and I've not seen it, then I ask you not to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah, Carol, you can say something. I just want to say, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry, there's a hum coming from our, we're gonna hum back.
My name?
Yeah.
Arthur Gautier, G-A-U-T-H-I-E-R.
Arthur, I just, if I could, Carol.
Go ahead, Carol.
You were talking about real estate and how it affects this one particular shop on High Street, which I understand what you're saying, it can't expand because of his unique situation, although he is grandfathered in, but also it affects the real estate of homeowners around the gun shop, because many people, and just hear me out, may not want to buy a home located across the street from a gun shop. I mean, that could affect other properties, so. And with some of the conversations we've had, I've had, I should say, I've had with some of the local people, that they were surprised that this gun shop went in right there across the street from, well, you can see where it is, there's houses all around. And I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, it's there, and he has a right to be there and continue to be there, but, I mean, that could, that argument of yours can go both ways.
Yep, historically, let me just say, that that has not been an industry that has been detrimental to value. It isn't like if you see this and you see the, if you look at a quarter-mile, half-mile radius around that property, if you, if you say, you know, if it happens the way that you're saying now, then there could be many homes that might suffer as a result of this. But I think you have the covenants in place to operate and monitor, not to operate, but to monitor these activities in form of laws that currently exist, as was pointed out here by one of the owners, and I think that that has to be considered as part and parcel of this. But I can tell you, I've been in this business, the commercial real estate business, for a long time, and I have not come across something, for instance, when you talk about schools and you talk about churches, that has nothing to do with this business.
No, but that's been taken out of the, that's no longer in this ordinance, so.
Okay, okay, but I can tell you that there has not been any history that I'm aware of, and I cover the state from top to bottom and into Massachusetts and into Connecticut, that have created a negative problem from the standpoint of value.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gautier. Is there anybody else? No, Jim, did you have to say?
Yeah, a question for Vin, or this gentleman would like to go first.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm Jay Corson, as many of you know. I'm a resident of South Kingstown. I was, I was actually informed about what's gonna happen a little late in the game, and sort of being educated as we go along, but I, I find it interesting tonight that we all stood, we pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and we've affirmed that our, our faith in our nation under God, that it was indivisible, we've agreed to uphold the liberty and justice for all. We all stood and did that. And yet, basically, we're here to decide if we should infringe upon the Constitution of the United States of America, and that's exactly the wording, infringe. Clearly, the Second Amendment of our beloved Constitution states, I quote, "As a well-regulated, a well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And that's exactly the wording. So we have to decide here tonight, as really what we're deciding is what we're gonna, how we're gonna define the word infringed. What has infringed me, but does it, will this infringe upon these gentlemen's rights or won't it infringe upon their rights? Well, if we don't pass this ordinance, will it infringe on the people around those rights? And I think, from being a, just a slightly partial observer, I think that if you were to find that it would be a bad idea to pass this ordinance, that I don't think that that would infringe upon the people around those shops' rights. But I think that if you do find that you, that it would be a good idea to pass this ordinance, that you have made a decisive and a very clear decision, that you've decided to infringe upon their rights to operate their shop as they would like to. So really, there's two, only two choices tonight that you guys have, and like I said, I came in late in the game and I'm just observing in addition. But we've got a right to infringe upon the Constitution, or we have a right to, to not infringe upon those rights. And I suggest that if we infringe upon those rights, we're traveling down a very slippery slope, which may lead to, to other rights being infringed upon as well. I know that the intention, I know some of the people in the council, and I know that your intentions are good. I know that the people that you are, not just the people sitting there, but the, the people. And I, I just, I'm going to urge you just to think and give it, maybe some more thought, not make a hasty decision on this one, to decide whether I, we're going to decide as a town whether we're going to infringe upon what we just pledged our allegiance to. I appreciate your time.
Please come forward and state your name.
Yeah. Brian Loftus, commercial fisherman, NRA life member, gun owner. I've been under the heavy oppression of government for 20 years, being in the fishing industry with restrictions and different kinds of legislation that comes out that violates the Constitution. And like Jay said, you know, we sat here and pledged to the flag. The purpose of the Constitution is not to restrain people or business or commerce. It's to restrain government. That was the whole purpose of the founding fathers. And to single out these two businesses and try to pass this, I think, is infringing on their rights, on the people's rights. If people want guns, they're going to buy them. You're just going to drive them out of town. There is no reason, there's never been a problem. I've lived here for 43 years, almost 44 years. There's never been a problem with any of the gun stores. You know, it was always universal, and then won over by purple cow or whatever, but there hasn't been a problem. Now, i- if this is such a safety issue that you're so concerned with, how about the liquor stores? And the people that hang around them and do all this thing. And I got no problem with liquor stores. I like to drink beer. But, the point is, you're not going after them. Farm law people get hurt from drinking alcohol and driving automobiles. Farm law people get hurt with knives and baseball bats. I don't see you going after the sporting shops that sell the bats and the different things. So, really, what is the intent of this? What is the purpose of this? I don't understand other than just another chip away at our personal liberties and our freedoms. And I think it's absolutely ridiculous that I have to be here and stand up for these guys. But that's what America's all about. I mean, you sat up there and you pledged allegiance, but did you take an oath to defend the Constitution? Any of you? Have you? I mean, have you done that? Because that's what we're talking about here. And we're watching it everywhere across the country. People are getting sick and tired of government telling them what they can do, where they can do it, how they can do it, and everything else. And that's exactly what you're trying to do. These are good, honest business people that are bringing commerce to our town. And if, we can't afford to lose any more business around here, as you know, living in Rhode Island. We're one of the third worst states in America for small business. Why are you messing with these guys? You should be embracing them, asking them what you can do to make their business better, not to try to put more restrictions on them and make it harder for them to make a living. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. O'Neill, and I think it was Ms. Fogarty, I'd like to thank you for, the first gentleman that spoke, how you sought clarity so that we could have a better, better understanding of what this means. I'm not an educated guy. I'm a common man. But this country's made up of common men. I just got done doing my taxes. I think it's absolutely shameful. I couldn't figure out what in the world was going on with those things. I had to buy a, you know, I refuse to pay someone to do my taxes. If I, as a citizen, can't figure out how to do my taxes, something's wrong with this country. And I had, I, I spent hours. I ended up buying a program. I got through it. It was an absolute nightmare. And I can't figure out what was going on with this thing, but thank you for the clarity you brought to it. I have a little better understanding of it now. To go kind of along with what's, what's been said recently, what you appear to be doing doesn't seem in and of itself to be that big of a deal to the majority of people. I think it's a big deal, and some people here think it's a big deal. But I'm sure the majority of the people in town don't think it's a big deal. However, one of the problems, the main problem with, with this country is the federal government and the rights they have stolen from us over the years and over the decades. And it hasn't been done in big leaps. It's been done in increments, little steps. This is a little step that you're taking. You might not think you're putting major restrictions on these gentlemen's abilities to operate these stores, but you're taking a step that the next council can build on and the next council can build on. You couldn't come in here, you wouldn't be able to come here tonight and say, "No more gun stores in town." There'd be an uproar here. But this is a, this is a soft little step. And then others are going to take soft little steps, and it may be years, it may be decades. But at some point, someone's going to take one more soft little step. There'll be no more gun stores in town. And that's, that's robbing us of our rights. Thank you.
Eric Vukic, V-U-K-I-C. I'm sorry.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Douglas Morcroft. I'm a resident of South, South Kingstown. I'm a firearm safety instructor, and I'm here tonight to request the town council to oppose these changes, which would severely limit the locations that firearm retailers can set up a shop. Rhode Island already has lots of laws and regulations and taxes concerning making our state very unfriendly towards businesses, and this change is just an additional anti-business regulation. These changes are unnecessary, volatilism, and unfairly target one business, in my opinion. Some of you may feel this is a minor change, a minor attack against the Second Amendment and the rights of our citizens, but many of these changes are cumulative and are just wearing against our basic rights. So, I urge you to reject this measure. Any questions or...
Thank you for your opinion. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the subject? No. Okay. Jim, I think you were going to say something before.
Yeah, a couple...
There is one man back there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else speak before Mr. Pike comes up again? I just, I always like to make sure everybody's had a chance. Okay. Go ahead, Dick.
Just before you close the public hearing, I wanted to say that based on the correspondence you've received and the public comment here tonight, if you vote in favor of this amendment, you're voting against the will of the people. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, Dale, I don't know if you've had a chance to recall, but at the, when we first approved the shop going in there, how many of the neighbors spoke out? Did we keep count? Did we have some names that spoke out against the shop going in there originally?
I don't recall anyone speaking against it.
I think there was one woman who was in the audience, from what I recall, who talked about it earlier.
Certainly one. I guess I thought there might be a couple. But you've received no correspondence.
I've received no correspondence.
Either from the first time or second time handing it back to the planning board. They received nothing, and now back to us. So, there's been no correspondence that you know of.
From, from neighbors?
Yeah.
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. And my second question for Vin, if I could just ask, the current shop on High Street, what is the lot coverage? The building, the square feet of the lot?
I have, inside my business?
Well, I need to know the building size and what that coverage is of the total lot.
Oh, I couldn't tell you. Mr. Castanza has that. I could tell you my square footage inside, which is roughly 600 square feet, floor space.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Roughly 600.
Vin, is that close to the number?
Yeah, it's roughly 600 square feet, 25 by 25.
I, I can't tell you off the top. The lot itself is just under, it's a pretty large lot. It's 232 and 236 High Street, and it's .92 acres. So, it's about 40,000 square...
I guess my question...
I don't know the coverage of the, of the building on, on the site.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what I wanted to know is, could that shop expand and not trigger, currently, and not trigger special use permit? What is the building coverage versus parking demands? What is, what are those ratios?
For the CN zone, I need to look at the zoning ordinance to, but, you know, there's a, it's a fairly deep lot that extends back, you know, up, you know, up along, parallel to Whitford Street. And the building is in the front left-hand corner.
Yeah, I certainly know the spot. I just didn't know, does it have enough parking spaces for that business or any other business in there? Would it require a special use permit in the future to expand that building?
It's a large, it's a large lot for that zone and that area. And the buildings, you know, that's an older building on the property. I guess years back was a meat market and other uses have been there, but...
So, the building might be able to expand a little bit.
Right. Although, you know, it's, it's set right up, it's set right up on the street, so an expansion of that building, if it didn't meet setback requirements, may require zoning relief.
But they could probably move towards a parking lot and in the rear and not trigger any...
There's, it's, it's a good-sized lot.
Right. So, there probably is room to expand.
Yeah, probably is, yeah, in some fashion, so.
Thank you.
Vin, can you also just elaborate a little bit on the liquor licenses and, for liquor stores in the town and the regulations that we have in place for placement of those?
Well, as I recall, there were some amendments done a couple of years ago regarding liquor licenses for liquor stores that are Class A license, Class A license, which does not permit such uses in the commercial neighborhood zoning district. And there's also state law that requires no more than one such license per 6,000. 6,000 residents as determined by the census. I think perhaps after the 2010 census, we may reach the trigger that might allow an additional one, unless the law changes or something. But liquor stores are not allowed in the commercial neighborhood zone, commercial downtown and commercial highway only.
I just, I just wanted to address that because I know that was brought up maybe once or twice this evening, that it's not specifically that we're going after firearm shops here. This is, this has been with, with the liquor stores too in town, that we don't have them in the commercial neighborhood areas. And again, it's not to restrict, you know, them from doing business either. It's just kind of a, a way of looking at, you know, what do you want in your commercial neighborhood areas where you have some kids out of the school bus? I think that was Carol's concern that she brought up, you know, originally. So, I mean, there is, there is restrictions on other things in the town. So, I mean, I just want everybody to be aware that, that those things are in place. Thank you, Vin. Anybody else? Ella?
I just wanted to respond to a couple of comments. Mr. Zachariah, if Mike could really give us his opinion on not calling into write the question of our citizens, is that something that needs to be read into the record? And what was your legal opinion on that?
I'm not sure I understand the question, not calling into question. Say that again, Ella?
Mr., maybe Mr. Zachariah could clarify this. He made mention that we should really clarify that we should be not calling into write the question of our citizens. And I don't think anyone here at the town council is questioning the citizens of our town, but if you could further elaborate, and maybe we could get a legal opinion.
If I may restate, it is frequently alleged that restrictions on firearms are put in place because there are concerns by government that the citizens are not or will not be capable of managing those firearms appropriately. In essence, it's a constitutional right. I think as a former and I hope future member of government, I would like to say that I have great faith in the citizens to do the right thing. I strongly suspect that each of you do also. But to avoid that criticism, I merely suggested that some sort of a, of a explicit statement of the fact that this is about a well-ordered commercial environment in the town rather than anything having to do with restrictions on citizens, might be worth being made by the council. I don't know if there's any legal precedent for that. I don't know that you need to. I'm just merely suggesting that, that criticism could result from people who misunderstood what was going on.
I just want to make sure that the record, but, but that was no means, any intent of this town council. I just want to really clarify that with you.
Well said.
If you have anything to add, Mike. I just wanted that clarified.
Yeah. You know, you're, you're not attempting to restrict the right of citizens to purchase a firearm.
That was not our intent at all.
Okay. All right. And that's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, and I go back to the question that was asked, and I think it's a great one, the purpose of where this came from. You know, and I've had many conversations with Lenny, and I have the highest regard, you know, for what you do at your shop and how you helped out with that woman. And you and I have shared many stories, and we're really grateful for what you have done. I, I do want to state that, you know, where the purpose of this came from is that, you know, many people did approach the town council with regard to the commercial neighborhoods with gun shops. So, that was the purpose of how this came to the table. We've elaborated. We've sent it back to zoning. We have had discussions here in the public work session, and this is not an easy decision for us. But I think also, when signatures were requested and speaking to a lot of people in town that have spoken to me about the gun shop, I really think that there was, I don't want to say misinformation, but they really thought that it was more restrictive than actually what it is. So, the way that I'm looking at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's probably just about six or seven spots that we're saying we would prefer not to have a gun shop. There are many other places to open a gun shop. We're just trying to preserve the neighborhoods that people have brought forward to a concern. I don't feel as though this is discriminatory. I don't feel as though, you know, we stood here, we pledged allegiance to our flag. I don't feel as though this is any infringement and, you know, that we have not followed through with that. Yes, we have all taken an oath to serve the town as a town council. I don't feel as though it's an infringement. So, those are just, you know, and that goes to Jake Orson, the right of the people to bear arms. We absolutely do understand that that's the federal and the state laws, and we're not impinging on that. We are just trying to make Wakefield what Wakefield is, and we're not, we don't want a gun shop on every single corner 20 years from now. You said that we don't want neighborhoods, you know, here. So, it, it was a purpose that did come from concerns of the citizen. So, I hope that clarifies, and I don't feel as though this is a big change from what we really have. Please.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead.
I want, I know I respect that, and I hate to keep going back to constitutional, to constitutional law. However, on January 16th, 1919, another amendment was made, the Eighteenth Amendment, that we're all, because there was a analogy made between alcohol and guns. And of course, the Eighteenth Amendment, after one year from the ratification of the article, "Manufacture, sale, transportation of intoxicating liquors within the importation thereof into or the exportation thereof in the United States and all territories subject to the jurisdiction thereof for beverage purposes is hereby prohibited." And we all know what happened to the Eighteenth Amendment, because when we go to the Twenty-First Amendment, the Twenty-First Amendment was ratified in December 5th of 1933. And the, the Twenty-First Amendment states, "The Eighteenth Article of Amendment to the Constitution of the United States is hereby repealed." They made a mistake. They admitted it, and they decided to change it later on. So, I think the analogy between a, although from a moral, from, as a, as a person who goes to church, I totally get it. But from a, from a, from a law point of view, from a, from a restricting, having government restrict essentially two gentlemen in town, possibly. I think that from a law point of view, that, you know, the, the Constitution clearly shows that that analogy is probably a poor one. And so, that's all I can say.
And I think when I was addressing that issue about the, the liquors, that Mr. Loftus... That there are restrictions in the town about both. He said, "Would you do this to a liquor store in town?" Well, yes, we have. This is, you know, it, it can go back to it. You know, I go back to the preamble, you know, "We, the people, in order to form a perfect union, establish justice and just, and, and ensure just domestic tranquility," you know... union, establish justice and just, and ensure just domestic tranquility, you know, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our prosperity. That domestic tranquility is what we're just trying to do here. So you say you have, you have your prosperous life, you have your people who live in, living in the neighborhood areas of the town, and to go out and be on the corner with a, with the gun shop on the corner, that's a little concerning to the, to the, to this town council. That's why this originally came. Then it came back that it was very, very restrictive, you know, about the zones around churches and schools and so forth. And we said, no, we're not going to try to do that. You still, in this town of South Kingston, you will still be able to have gun shops on commercial highway, commercial downtown areas. This isn't blanketing saying that nobody in the town can sell, can sell guns in the town of South Kingston. You can certainly buy one, somebody else can come along, there can be competition for both of the gun shops. If they want more competition, you know, that's certainly going to be allowable in the town of South Kingston. It's, it's sometimes we have, we've done over the years, is there's things that have come up that really hasn't been housekeeping done on them. You know, it does come up. We've done this on different items that come up. This was just one of them. I, I understand the NRA, I understand the Second Amendment, I understand the First Amendment, believe me. We're, we're demonstrating that tonight, and, and so on and so forth. So it's not that we're anti-gun. I don't like guns, I'll be honest and upfront with you. I do not like them, but I, I'm not going to take them away from any of you. I'm just saying, we just don't think, you know, when you have a kid at a school, going out to a school corner on a bus, if it was by your neighborhood and your kids who are older now, I've seen the pictures in the office, yes, I do have a bad back. You know, if you wanted one of those at your street corner, that would be a little concerning.
I just want to say, I'm not a gun owner. I'm not a gun owner, I just want to say that.
I'm sure they have.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned like, like Mr. Vukic brought up. This is a, this is a, this is a step in a direction to change existing law, and I just feel it should be taken, you know, and I know you're taking it seriously.
We take it very seriously, absolutely. Okay, Cal?
To the man in the black shirt there, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Brian Loftus.
No, you can sit down, that's okay. I just wanted to say, you asked us if we ever did take an oath to uphold the Constitution. I know we all have here. Twenty-five years ago, I took one as a lawyer, and I've been up, and I work at it every day, upholding the Constitution. So I hope you understand that that is never my intent to violate the Constitution. And with that said, I don't believe this ordinance, and not only do I not believe, I know it doesn't violate the Constitution. The rights for any person to bear arms, buy arms, has, is still intact. This is more of a planning issue, an overall planning of the town. Where do we want to keep, you know, commercial locations, especially like we were saying with alcohol, guns, we, these things, it has been upheld by courts that you can, you can regulate where you, you know, towns, cities and towns can regulate, can regulate where they want these establishments to be. And I don't believe we're going to affect at all the universal firearms. I mean, he's right downtown, he's protected, he's in the commercial zone. The only man that may, that is, that everybody seems to be talking about is freedom, sports and arms. Now, it's my understanding that Mr. Leonard, is it Lenny?
Lenny Kowko.
You don't own that building, do you?
No, I don't. Just stands at this.
Oh, I see. And in the future, he may have to go to zoning to expand that into a larger gun shop. But the purpose of this is just to keep it in certain areas. And just like in many areas, you have homes, you can't even open up a grocery store because it's just a residential district. So I mean, it's not just guns. It's, everything can be.
Okay, fine, and you had a public hearing.
You can come to the microphone.
The government arrives its powers from the governed. The governed have spoke tonight, and there's been no opposition to it, so here we are.
Please, please come forward. No, no, I think Leslie, this, well, she was coming first. You are more than welcome to express your First Amendment right after.
Leslie Schwannad, yeah, I just heard, and I'm not against these gentlemen, and I concur with what you've said, the gentleman who was talking about the erosion of the Constitution, if an amendment were to happen, and it was eroded, as you said, to my understanding of, of US history and the Constitution, and the lawyer can concur on that, you'd have to have thirty-six states agree to change an amendment. And to get thirty-six states in this day and age to agree to change an amendment so that your, your, you know, your privileges on eroded on guns, I think would be very hard. So thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Henry Thayer. I have a quick question. How would this affect gunsmith shops?
Gunsmith shops, Mike? I don't, this is covered in this regulation? Unless you're selling them, yeah.
If you're not selling the final product, it's not going to affect you.
Well, we do sell them, we just don't transfer them out of that location.
In other words, you're not retailing them?
No, but we still do have customers. So this would not affect that.
I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Can you say your name again?
Henry Thayer.
I thought you looked familiar, Henry.
So this would not affect that at all?
Where's your business, Henry?
It's off of Ministerial Road.
And what do you do? What does a gunsmith do?
Repair, clean, modify, customize, you know. Now, before I filed for my license, I went to my business lawyer, John Canyon, and I asked him. We went over the paperwork. He says, you're well within the zoning ordinance, there's no problem, file it. So I did. And they came down and gave me a license. So I just wondered if this would affect me.
I think the definition's pretty clear that it says the sale of firearms, ammunition, ammunition components, we're talking about the retail, and, and the, the title of the article is retail trade. So as long as you're not retailing, is not an issue.
Okay, but there is another issue I have. I do, do make custom ammunition for certain customers. They come to me with certain requests.
The ordinance that's before us deals with retail sales. Whether this gentleman's business is a legal activity on Ministerial Road or on Brookwood Farm is not the question. It's before the council. That would be a question before the zoning officer. So let's, let's be clear. The only thing we're dealing with here is the ordinance amendment. Whether you have the right to be doing what you're doing in your home is a question for the, for the zoning officer, not for this council.
Just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
You're safe, Henry. Okay, anybody else? No, anybody on the council? Jim? Okay, Jim, can you hold for a second? Could you just state your name for the record again, sir?
Eric Fruchus, I'm sorry. You said that this would not have any effect on universal firearms, correct?
No.
Correct. You also said that there was some language deleted from this, and the original language included proximity to places of worship and schools.
Right.
Did that affect the universal firearms, the original language?
A lot of people showed up that night saying that it would, and universal was one of them. And yes, we did listen, and I know you're saying that, you know, we're not listening to the word, the will of the people, but this has all been changed because of the group that showed up.
Well, so you attempted to take two steps against our freedoms, and now you backed off one, so it's now only one step.
That wasn't the intent of what I was saying.
That was, your name was Eric?
Yes.
Fruchus, okay. Just wanted to state that for the record, okay?
Joseph Flesha, please bear with me, I'm not an eloquent speaker. You yourself stated you don't like guns. So you want to enforce your vision for the future of Wakefield upon the, we the people who have overwhelmingly spoke out against this. Where is, we're the ones who are in favor of this. Your own attorney and this woman here said, no one spoke out when Lenny tried to move in. And now all of a sudden, you're doing this for the people that are speaking out? Where are they? We the people are here. I served our country. Have any of you, maybe Mr. O'Neill, anyone there serve our country?
Does that make us less American than you?
Do we, because we didn't serve the country?
Does that make us less American? Is that what you're saying too?
That you're, you said yourself you don't like guns, so you've made up your mind already.
I don't know, I did not. My brother has guns.
You, you, excuse me, sir, you are putting words in my mouth.
My personal opinion is, I don't like guns. I find them to be quite scary. I am not inflicting this upon anybody. I bet I could find other people in the town who have the same opinion that I would have. I'm right, I have a right to my opinion, and I also have that First Amendment right to express that. I'm sorry if that offended you, I did not mean to.
Now, you said that firearms are, are very, excuse me, I told you I'm not eloquent, scary. My children have been trained and taught proper safety and respect for firearms, been shooting them since they were five years old, never shot themselves or their friends because they respect and understand. And those who don't teach their children are the ones we should worry about, the irresponsible people. And we're here trying to defend our rights, and you've already decided because you don't like guns.
That's, that's not, that is not true, that we've already decided. I actually have a very open opinion on this, and we were having discussion before the, before the meeting, and, you know, a lot of us didn't agree with, with, with doing this. So don't prejudge us. We have very open opinions. We've actually, as Carol has stated, when we had another council meeting a few weeks back, when this legislation came through with some of those restrictions on near churches and schools, we listened, we sent it back, we changed that. That's not here now. So I want to be very open with you about what has happened.
Here now before us then, as we will just infringe upon one man's rights, because it won't affect the other man. You said this won't affect?
The blacksmith, because he's not selling guns.
Won't affect the universal arms, it will only affect Mr. Kowko in the future.
He's grandfathered in.
It won't necessarily affect him. He can stay in business.
Necessarily? What does that mean?
Unless he sells his business to another business.
Take necessarily out. It won't affect him. His business can go on.
So if I try to buy his business from him, I won't have to come before you and beg and plead to get a, an exception or, that's correct?
Yes.
He's still going to stay open. He's not closing.
It's actually going to help because there's no more competition.
There's no more competition in the neighborhood. All we're saying is nobody, a firearm store can't go next door to him, that's all. But he can stay there.
Okay, thank you.
But he cannot expand.
Okay, and why is that?
Well, that, that's how this is written. I just, I just want to make that clear. He cannot expand unless he goes to the planning board for a special use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Kath, do you want to talk a little bit more about the competition?
You can go right ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim was next, and then Polly, I mean Ella, excuse me.
I don't know if this is on anymore.
Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, gosh. Where's Vin? Is he? Vin, I'm sorry, can I talk to you a little bit more? The gentleman was correct. We did take out two steps, maybe three in this ordinance. We did take out the 200-foot rule. Is that correct? On the C, on the universal firearms?
Yeah, proximity to churches, places of worship or schools, yes.
And we did take away the special use permit requirement in his zone, a CD zone, as well as the commercial highway zone.
That's right.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. In, in those three commercial zones, CN where freedom is, CD, CH, what are some of the other products and businesses? Where are we with gas stations, automobile related? What, just maybe give us an example of, of what is prohibited?
Well, gas station is, gas, gas station is a good example, because that's a classic special use permit. It's a proper use, but it needs to be looked at individually to make sure it's appropriate for the location. Special use permits typically have specific criteria listed in the zoning ordinance to govern the consideration before the zoning board of review. Gas stations are permitted in the commercial highway zone. They are not permitted in the commercial downtown zone. And they're not permitted as a matter of right in the commercial neighborhood, I believe, as well. Other, another example might be in the commercial highway zone, you can have a drive-through use. You can't have that in the commercial neighborhood zone, and you can, and for the commercial downtown zone, the only use that can have a drive-up window or drive-through would be, I believe it's pharmacy or a bank, and that's by, no, excuse me, it's just a bank, and that's by special use permit. So, I mean, these are things that are regulated under the ordinance, both here in South Kingston and other communities in the state of Rhode Island and elsewhere. So as some examples.
Could Paul Massey, Quick Tire, Arnold Lumber, could they expand without a special use permit? Those industries, if you will, automobile sales, lumber, tire sales? I mean, given, forget setbacks, could they expand?
There's a three different classes of uses. They, they may require zoning relief, especially if they're on small lots. Arnold Lumber, obviously, the old branch is not on a small lot, but, you know, Quick Tire is fairly, but it's been there for years and years, and properly so. I mean, I might defer to the building official, but, you know, oftentimes businesses that are older, predating zoning on small lots with unusual configurations that might predate zoning, which I think came into town '52, something of that sort, you know, wouldn't fit the modern standards. So they often do come before the zoning board, and, and certainly as Mrs. Eddy is a member of the zoning board for, for some while, would know that they often, they often have to go to the zoning board for some consideration. And we have a good zoning board, and they're quite reasonable in their outlook and accommodating to where they can, and properly conditioned where, where they can, or where, where it's appropriate.
Vin, could I ask you, we've been saying that the special use goes through the planning board, it actually goes through the zoning board, doesn't it?
That's right, yeah. At, at times, depending on the use, it may end up with the planning board.
For those of us who care deeply about the zoning board.
Right, the zoning board, the special use permit is the province of the zoning board, as is a dimensional variance and that sort of thing.
Good point. Thank you, thank you, Vin. Ella?
Oh, I thought you had a question. Is it beating the dead horse on there? Do you want to reiterate it again, or just leave it?
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak before we close the public hearing? Please come forward again, state your name for the record.
My name is Richard Pike, and I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but before Freedom Sports and Arms opened up in that location, there was a place called Ethnic Concepts, and they sold papers for a rolling hemp, whatever that is, and water pipes. And I think that it's been a heck of an improvement to the neighborhood to have freedom, sports and arms there. And I would guess that probably most of the neighbors in that neighborhood would agree to the same thing. So, I mean, if you're considering what you're limiting there, also consider what you still allow there. Thank you.
Lenny Kowko, owner of Freedom Sports and Arms. Nobody knew there was a gun shop prior to me opening up. Now, when you drive by Freedom Sports and Arms, which you all do probably a couple of times a week, do you see any guns hanging in windows? Like you see other stores have shoes in a window, dresses, suits? You don't see guns hanging in a window. People that come into my shop and in Hank's shop are legitimate people. They're legitimate people that can buy firearms. They're not people with criminal records. If they have a criminal record, they're not going to get a firearm. So what I'm saying to you, it might be Freedom Sports and Arms, I might sell firearms, but when you drive by the place, you do not see firearms hanging in my windows. If you come in the business, you will see firearms, just like you will see in any firearms business, whether it's in Dick's Sporting Goods or in Hank's or in mine. So the people that come into my place to buy firearms are legitimate people. Now, my son owns the adjourning store, which sells paintball and airsoft guns and the accessories to go with it. If he ever moves his business and I want to expand, I can't. Because now I have to come back to the zoning board to expand. So I want to make my business bigger. I have to get the blessing from the town, which I don't think is fair. I want to make my business bigger. I want to bring more revenue into this town. But I might be slapped on the back of the hand and say, no, because you sell firearms. So if I open a meat shop or a candy store, I get the blessing. So I feel firearms, and again, feel discriminated. Whether it's a second amendment right, well, whatever right, you're discriminating against me expanding in that building. You drive by the shop, you don't see guns. You don't even see a sign that says guns. That's all I have to say.
Excuse me, Eric, could you spell your name?
Sure, it's V, as in Victor, U.K.I.C.
Thank you.
I just, you, you, you all might not be aware of this, but, um, I'm, I'm a hunter, I'm a firearm owner, I'm a NRA Life member, I belong to a rotten gun club, gun club, sportsman's club, love shooting, uh, don't do nearly enough of it, because it has gotten very expensive, uh, but I will not purchase a firearm from a Dick's Sporting Goods. I don't know any, I've never spoken to anyone who bought a gun from a Dick's Sporting Goods store and was happy about it. The guy working behind the counter at Dick's Sporting Goods was selling sneakers the week before, he doesn't know nothing about guns. He, you know, he might know a little bit, but they have, you, you, you know, they'll, they'll sell you a gun if you qualify, but, I mean, they're useless, beyond that. These guys, this is their life, this is where I go to purchase a firearm, to one of these guys, and same with everybody I know. Used to be able to buy guns in a Walmart, can't do it anymore. Dick's Sporting Goods, you know, I used to buy hunting supplies there, they carry hardly anything anymore, they're, they're getting away from that stuff. These are the, these are the only places to go, in my opinion, for this type of, of equipment, and, uh, you know, any restrictions placed on them, if they disappear, where am I gonna go? I can't even go out of state and buy, I, I went to, uh, Cabela's, you know, you can't, but I can't buy a, a gun at Cabela's in Connecticut without going through a big rigmarole. Massachusetts, I can't even handle a gun in a gun store, because of the way the laws are. So, you know, these guys, these, this is it, this is, for this, for this retail market, these are the stores to go to, and, uh, you know, if they disappear-
We hope that they stay.
Well, I understand, I understand you do, but what I want you to understand is, the, the reason we're here is because we are constantly under attack for the, for just exercise-
But not here, you're not in there.
No, I, 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 I'm not accusing you of, of, of that, but that's why we're defensive about this kind of thing, because our Second Amendment rights are constantly under attack, and I, you have to realize that.
We realize that, and I realize the commercial fishermen are too, I have a neighbor who's very vocal, I, I sympathize with the, the restraints that have been put on you.
Mm-hmm.
When, again, we're not stopping it from happening in the town of South Kingston-
Not today, and that's what I was trying to say before.
Not tomorrow either, not here.
Well, not, and maybe not you group of people, but the next group of people can build on what you do here today, that's, that's all I want you to realize.
Just don't punish us, don't, you know, just don't punish us for the future, we, we are not driving them out of town.
No.
We are not, we are supporting their businesses in town.
That's not your intentions, I understand that, but what you do may be a step in, in towards that, that action, without you even realizing it, or intending to, I'm not accusing you of intending to.
I don't think it is, I, I disagree with you, I don't think this is the first step in that process.
Okay.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, is that, make sure everybody has had a chance. Okay. Has been a motion to close, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so, what is the council's pleasure, what motion would you go to?
Well, I've been very quiet, can I speak first?
Yes, you certainly can.
Okay, Polly, um, I've been quiet, because I came into, the more I got into this, I really have not had any complaints about the gun shops in town, no one has said they were a problem, uh, I think all of us are for promoting business in town, and, uh, I have heard nothing tonight to make me think that the gun shops are a problem, and I read the regulation that we are considering, and it honestly didn't seem to do very much to either help or hinder the gun shops in town, so, um, I am not for this, uh, and that's my reason.
Okay, Polly, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Jim?
A question from Michael, um, can the, um, Freedom Sports, can that particular location be excluded from the overall CN emphasis in this ordinance before us? Not just grandfathered in, but grandfathered with rights they currently have?
Yeah, that, that would be classic spot zoning.
Well, we know that, but we're very good at that.
I know, they'd be grandfathered in, um, if, if in fact they would expand more than 25 percent, they would have to go, um, whoever, even if it wasn't the present gentleman who owned it, it was some future owner, they would have to go to the zoning board to, um, to ask for an expansion, um, beyond the 25 percent of what they're doing today. But you, you couldn't adopt an amendment that says everywhere in CN except for this one spot.
I was thinking of that, this permit up on Kingston Road, remember the school, that we had to quickly identify six other districts that a hundred kids could fit into for a school? Anyway, um, 25 percent is a rule, but how would this affect this, if he wanted to expand 25 percent, he's still under the old formula, or is he fall under the disordinance would regulate?
Good question. I'm not sure you mean by the old formula, this, this sets everything up now, so if he's a legal non-conforming use-
Period, so, any expansion.
Period, right, well, no, 25 percent. It's not any expansion.
Any two, 25 percent.
Right.
But he's 100 percent firearms right now, right?
No.
I mean, not 100 percent, but his whole store is dedicated to-
Yeah, I, I mean, if he has 600 square feet, you just do the math, and-
Yeah, yeah, so he can go to 750 square feet, but with a special use permit from the zoning board, if this passed?
No, he would not need a special use permit, as long as he stayed under the 25 percent, and Vin, correct me if I'm wrong, I, there's, there's none, there's none required, there is, I mean, unlike selling alcohol, there's no special use permit required here. It would just be an expansion of a non-conforming use, Jim, that's all.
So he can do that, if this ordinance passed, he can do that up to 25 percent.
Right.
I would have to ask that question. I would have to ask that question.
Well, so that really doesn't need, that, that really doesn't impact him, it-
No, that, the impact would be above the 25 percent.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I was trying to get that ratio between what parking was needed, for what kind of a retail business, for, I, I still have a, I don't understand-
I don't think, I don't think it would affect the, the parking, I, I mean, I think the whole building is already set out for however, however much parking is necessary for all the businesses going on in there now.
One direction.
I, I mean, whether or not the hardware store expands, or the gun shop expands, or whatever else is in there expands, that's, that's, it's not going to expand the physical footprint of the building, if we got into that, that'd be a whole different issue.
So at the moment, the, the traffic then is not going to affect the parking spaces there?
As long as the building is what it is today, unless you put a restaurant in there, then some different parking restrictions would come in, but-
Well, I guess just from my standpoint, I, I kind of agree with Polly here, um-
Excuse me, councilman, could I?
Vin?
I've got, I've got the ordinance in front.
Okay.
Um, I, I believe, as it's a non-conforming, illegal non-conforming use, any expansion, I think, requires a, a special use permit. There's provisions for, um, expansion of, if a use is in by a special use permit, then there's a cap on how much it can be expanded, but I believe Article Two, um, non-conforming by use, um, section 202D, addition or enlargement, and, uh, I don't know if there's a particular cap per se, but it would require a trip to the zoning board to-
It would.
Yes, in my, in my estimation, yeah.
Well, to go back to my thinking, I guess I agree with Polly, uh, with this, um, there've been good businesses, um, I think what I really wanted to see, if there was a, a neighborhood issue, um, like we heard the first time around from a couple of the neighbors, uh, they have not come before the council here publicly, and sometimes I can understand that, but according to Dale, we have not gotten any correspondence, uh, on this issue, uh, from any of the neighbors, uh-
I, all the-
Supporting this.
No.
Nothing.
But that's not unusual, Jim, many times when, then, when people support us, we don't hear from them.
No.
It's the people who are against something we, that we're looking into, that they may, they may come out, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm certainly well aware of that, I'm, um, I just don't think this, um, I don't think we need to move forward with this. At the very least, I would rather have a work session to go over parts of our zoning in the CN areas, there's some CNs, like, uh, at the crossing, which are all business, then we have other CN areas where, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Um, as council knows, a year ago, we were, uh, fighting over whether or not we could have 50 people in the audience to listen to a, uh, our teenagers play music over the Troubue Cafe, um, yow, and I had asked for that time, and maybe we need to talk about zoning, especially softer zoning that leads into residential neighborhoods, I did bring that up. Um, as you know, I've also brought up that I really think the whole town should get rid of the 200-foot rule, like, uh, nine other communities in the state for, uh, restaurants that serve alcohol, because there might be an old church in town, or, or a school in town, so, so I have a problem with the zoning issue here, so, um, I would support Polly on this.
Okay, all right. I have a question, I guess.
Ella, does that mean you have? Um, I guess I just have another question, Michael, um, and we talked about this at the work session, if indeed, um, and Polly probably could address this better than anyone, but if indeed, um, somebody did want to open another gun shop, which actually would create competition against the two gun, gun shops that we have, so it may possibly take away business from your gun shops, which are well-respected. If this, if somebody did want to open a third, fourth, fifth gun shop, um, is there a way that we could, you know, post and advertise, which we do now, but to bring, like, notification to the neighbors, and I know that that would probably be a change in the zoning, but if that could be addressed, um-
No, not, if you were to adopt this, not in the zones in which it would be allowed as a right, because it would be no different than any other type of business opening up.
And, and what if a group of neighbors got together six months from now and protested? I mean, what would be the recourse then? Go back and look at this again?
Yes, just like apparently when a gun shop opened in this commercial neighborhood zone, someone protested, and that's why you're looking at it, but, I, I mean, you can't say, you know, just because it's a gun shop, as long as it's allowed in a certain zone, they have to advertise first. Um, the fact that neighbors were to object to a use if it's allowed in the zone, doesn't make the use illegal in any way, it doesn't give you, as a council, the power to stop it.
Right.
All you can do as a council is amend the zoning ordinance, decide where uses can and cannot take place, which is really good for you tonight.
And the reason why I ask is because of the, what has been brought up here with, um, the voice of the people, so, that's where I ask the question.
Okay, thank you, Ella. Any other comments? I need to have a motion.
Well, I, I support the ordinance as drafted, I don't think it infringes on any constitutional rights, I think it's more of a planning issue on where we want to have locations of gun shops, and as we do with all businesses, and I don't think it will affect, uh, these businessmen and future businessmen in their dealings, if another gun shop wants to come in, under this ordinance, they can come in without a special use, a permit, they just have to go to certain areas in the town, the, uh, commercial highway district and the commercial downtown, and if it's a sporting goods shop with only 25 percent of the, uh, inventory considered, uh, firearms and ammunition, then, uh, they can open up in almost any area, they can open up in the commercial neighborhood, so I think it's a good planning, uh, tool for the future, and I don't see it as chipping away at anyone's rights, uh, we certainly are not trying to do that. So I, uh, I would propose approval of public hearing A.
Is there a motion to approve, is there a second?
If, if you're gonna make, um, a motion to approve, Carol, could, could I ask you to make it in accordance with the, um, memo of April 5th, I don't have that motion in front of you, I'm more than happy to read it.
Okay, the South Kingston Town Council, uh, where's the motion?
That's-
I asked that we approved public hearing item 7A, as detailed in Agenda Exhibit One.
Keep on going.
In approving this item, the council incorporates the recommendations of the planning board, as noted in its correspondence dated March 10th, 2010, including finding of facts, consistency with the comprehensive community plan, and findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Y'all second it, because I think we should vote on it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Cat, or Ella?
This is, this is just very, very hard, um, the way that I'm gonna vote tonight is representation of the people, um, and my heart is not fully with that, but I'm gonna vote that way tonight, so I, I'm going to vote against any changes, um, you people have worked hard, you've come forward, we have not heard from, um, the neighbors, I have the highest respect here for my fellow town council member, Carol McIntee, um, and this is a very, very difficult decision.
Okay, Ella, I want to speak to that, too, oh, I thought you had something, Polly, um, since I always have to be the last to, to speak, but, um, it is a difficult decision to make, i- i- in the, in the town, and I, and I think it's, you can see, it's probably, um, um, not gonna, gonna pass, but I, I, I just want to reiterate that this is not with the town council, we were not here to take any of your civil liberties away, your constitutional rights, this is a matter of, and we've done this before on different items that have come across the town, that it's just a matter of doing some, some housekeeping, you know, items, um, there's only a small, if you really looked at the maps and you saw what our commercial neighborhood areas are, you would realize there's not really any areas to, it's not really worth putting a gun shop in, uh, any of those particular areas, um, but you stood up, you fought for your, your particular rights, um, you know, and I applaud you for doing that, um, but again, it's, you know, the, the onslaught of the people, and you know, it's like, you know, you're really trying to do something bad here, we're not trying to do that, we're not any less American than you are, than you are, or because you own a gun, or I just, I dislike guns, it's just my particular preference on them, I mean, if you love them, then God bless you, I'm glad that you do, um, I just don't want to see, you know, you at night somewhere with one of them, but, you know, that's-
At a Starbucks.
At a Starbucks, or whatever the pla- exactly.
At a Starbucks, yes.
Yeah, it, you know, um, you know, it's, it's, um, again, I came here with a very open mind, uh, uh, on this particular subject, uh, you know, I understood what Carol was saying with the neighborhood, you know, areas, and again, I just, I personally don't believe that, you know, it should be, you know, right out when kids going out to the bus stop in the morning, it's the first thing that they see, or they're hanging out on the street corner, I don't think any of you guys would want that around your, your particular house, really, I mean, honestly, do you, do you, even though your kids might love it, you know, it's just, you know, not something that we wanted to see, but the, Ella's right, that we really didn't get an outcry from the people of the town that, you know, that they didn't want it there, maybe down the road, this might be revisited again, if somebody does go into one of the commercial neighborhoods, and we'll have to look at it again, um, but I just want you to see what our opinion was, I, I know you guys feel like, you know, everybody's against you, and you know, it's the whole, and it's the government, and all that type of thing, please, you know, I don't want any of the militia issues from out in the Midwest or anything like that coming out, that's not what we were intending to do, we're just trying to clean up, and I still believe that they really should be in the commercial highway and commercial downtown areas of this town, of South Kingston, it's not anti-business, it's not anything like that, they can come, you want more businesses to come with gun shops, if you want more competition, the two gentlemen here, God bless you for standing up and saying you want more competition, usually people want monopolies, you know, in their towns, um, with, with the business that they have, that anybody can go there, so, um, you know, I, I, I will probably stand with the other three and, um, not, you know, not move forward with this particular, um, item this evening, um, only because we didn't hear the outcry from some of the other people in the, in the town, but again, if it does happen again, and there's more of an outcry, and people are, you know, standing up and saying, "I don't want it," you know, we're gonna have to, and if I'm on the council, we'll have to take a serious listen to it, like everything else that we do, we, we're very open here on this, on this town council, and, and listen to both sides of, of the issues. Again, I still will reiterate that I dislike guns intensely, and I don't want to see them anywhere around my house, but I'm not gonna stop your, your, your Second Amendment right to have them and, and bear them, and I hope you never have to use them in, in a negative way. So, we have a motion, it's been seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The motion is denied, um, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Council President Fogarty.
Nay.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Nay.
Councilwoman McIntee.
Yay.
Councilman O'Neil.
Nay.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Nay.
All right, so, we are done with the public hearing item A, and we are going to move on now to public hearing item B.
Thank you for doing the right thing for the people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. You sure you don't wanna stay for public hearing item B? All right, we are on a public hearing relative to an application rega- requesting a zoning map amendment for commercial neighborhood, limited to use code forty-two dash office, personnel, and limited business service, ten thousand and one, fifty thousand square foot GLFA use, use code twenty, educational institution, primary through secondary, subject to the following conditions. The premise shall be, number one, the premise shall be restricted to an educational institution servicing grades K to six, that no more than seventy-five students be permitted, three, that no more than four classrooms be permitted, four, that the total floor area of the school be no greater than two thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet, five, that the Planning Board conduct development plan review of the proposed school, six, that the existing vegetative buffer screening that property from adjoining residence shall be maintained, and seven, that the dumpster shall be enclosed and secured. Okay. To the commercial neighborhood, limited to use code forty-two, office, personnel, and limited business service, ten thousand one to fifty thousand square feet GLFA use, use code twenty-seven, and service organizational, and use code twenty, educational institution, primary through secondary, subject to the following conditions. One, the premise shall be restricted to an educational institution servicing grades K to six, two, that no more than seventy-five students be permitted, three, that no more than four classrooms be permitted, four, that the total floor area of the school be no greater than that of two thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet, and that the Planning Board conduct development plan review of the proposed school, six, that the existing vegetative buffer screening, the property from the adjoining residence shall be maintained, and seven, the dumpster shall be enclosed and secured. For the property located at thirty-three North Road, Unit C, approximately seven thousand two hundred square feet, and designated as AP forty-nine-one, Lot eighty-three dash three, application by Lily Pads Property Incorporated, owner and the Education Exchange. Ooh, that was a lot to talk about. Coming on up again, Vin?
Um, Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry, the correspondence, I'm sorry.
Yes, we have a communication dated March tenth, two thousand and ten, recommending the proposed zoning amendment from the Planning Board to the town council, and also incorporating findings of fact and findings of consistency with the purpose of zoning. There's also another communication in opposition to this zoning amendment, and that's from Cheryl Daniels Duncan, and one other communication in favor of this proposed zoning amendment from Reverend Betty Cornitzer.
Okay. Thank you, Dale. All right, Vin?
Good evening again. This, this property's been subject to previous town council zoning restrictions. It's listed in the appendix of the zoning ordinance, parcel subject to special conditions of prior zoning amendments. I believe those are dated back to October nineteen eighty, July of ninety-five, and June twenty-third of two thousand and eight. The last amendment was permissive towards the Unitarian Church being established on the site. In essence, this amendment before the town and this public hearing seeks to establish one additional use code on the property, that being use code twenty-seven, service organization, and that would permit the Education Exchange to operate out of Unit C on the property. That would be the only change. Other things that were placed on the property by past councils would remain in effect. The Planning Board reviewed this, as the clerk noted at their meeting on March ninth, and in correspondence dated March tenth, provided recommendations in support, findings of fact, findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning, and consistency with the comp plan, so it's fairly straightforward, and so, you know, it's kinda wordy, the, the different things that are applying to it, but it's one new use code to accommodate the applicant.
Okay. All right, thank you. Vin, do they have any questions with Vin regarding this, before he steps away? No? Okay. Nobody? So, this is a public hearing, so please, if you have anything to comment on, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the town council. I am Margaret Hogan of Hogan &amp; Hogan here in Wakefield, and I do represent the applicant this evening, the Education Exchange Incorporated. With me tonight is Margaret Benz, the Executive Director of the Education Exchange, and a number of folks in the rear of the, of the room, that are both board members and staff members at the Education Exchange. By way of brief background on the Education Exchange, you probably would recognize its former name, which was the Washington County Adult Learning Education Center. That is the entity which we've all known for many, many years, as having been located in the Stedman Government Center up on Route One. It has served as the local GED testing site and teaching facility for many, many years, and has been located in that facility at no rent. As you know, the state is facing interesting financial times, and the Education Exchange has been asked to vacate the premises. It's a difficult task to locate an appropriate property, and the Education Exchange has spent several months doing just that. At this point in time, we have located a property at Lily Pads, which would be perfectly appropriate for this particular use, as is set forth by the recommendation of the Planning Board. What's really terrific about this particular location is its proximity to the center and the heart of our community and the residents that it serves. It is located on a bus line, which is very advantageous to a number of the students that the Education Exchange serves. In addition, it is be located in very close proximity to other service organizations that serve oftentimes, and not always, the same clientele. The Education Exchange does offer classes in the mornings, and in the afternoons, and in the evenings, four days a week. On Fridays, the Education Exchange normally has reserved that day for testing. We anticipate that the move would take place very rapidly, as we are experiencing significant pressure from the state of Rhode Island to vacate that premises, even though, as we probably all realize, that once it's vacated, it'll probably remain vacant for the next two years, while they figure out what to do with it, but in any event, we're doing our best to try and accommodate the state's needs. At the present time, there are approximately eight staff members, and there are approximately forty to forty-five students being served at any given time. In addition to GED and basic education, the Education Exchange also offers classes and services for our business community. So, for instance, if you need your staff to be trained in Microsoft, or Excel, or one of those kind of computer programs, the Education Exchange can handle that as well. The parking on the site is ample for what we need. As you know, one of the major tenants there, I was here a few years ago with the, the church, and they're primarily occupying that premises on Sundays, when we would not be in session, so we don't anticipate any use conflicts there. We have engaged in some discussions with our neighbor, Mr. Butler, who I'm sure is gonna speak this evening, who has expressed to us his concerns relative to traffic patterns and any potential encroachments on his property. I would like to assure you that we agree with his comments, that the traffic pattern there should be enforced in the way that it was laid out by the Planning Board originally, and that will be certainly strictly adhered to by the Education Exchange. In addition, relative to any encroachments on Mr. Butler's property, that was also not acceptable by the board or the staff of the Education Exchange, and each student that comes to the Education Exchange will be so informed of those regulations, and we're certainly amenable to any additional signage that the council thinks would be appropriate to help Mr. Butler in that regard. I do have, I said, Margaret Benz here with me this evening, if you have some questions for her.
Good evening. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm really very excited to, to be here this evening in front of you. It's been a long couple of months, and Miss Eddy.
About how many GEDs do you give out a year?
Actually, last year, I believe it was about a hundred and sixty-eight GEDs that came through and tested.
Questions?
What part of the community do you service? Like, what area? Is it just South Kingstown?
We actually, the, the Education Exchange serves all of Southern Rhode Island. We have sites throughout, we have sites in Westerly. Wakefield is our headquarters. We also have another site in North Kingstown as well. We have two sites in Westerly, here in Wakefield, and then in North Kingstown.
And those hundred and sixty-eight GEDs, were those from Wakefield?
Those, they, they came to Wakefield and were tested in Wakefield, yes, and they came from throughout South County, yes. And if you're, the ones from South Kingstown, I believe it was thirty-seven or thirty-eight, I can't remember.
Right. And what age group do you, do you have?
Our predominant age group is between twenty-five and forty-four.
Great. Any other questions for Margaret?
Just you do a great, great job.
Thank you.
And we're very fortunate, and we wish you the best of luck with this new environment.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
That was a kind of a raw deal you got from the state, so quickly to be pushed out, and we know that, because Margaret has been in front of us and with the council when we do the human services part of the budget for several years, and when it was under the, the other Washington County Adult Education Center, so we've seen it both ways, and they do do very good work there. And you've never had any problems with any of your clientele in the past, when you were up at the, no, no, no. Pretty much in and do their, do their work and kind of head right out. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I do have to submit to the council a few printouts from the Education Exchange's website, which identifies the staff and the teaching staff, as well as names of the boards of directors, and a couple of press releases, tells you a little bit more about what we do.
Yeah, oh, yes, to give to Dale, I'm sorry, I'm right in what you're saying. Sorry. Okay. If there's anybody else who'd like to come forward, please state your name for the record.
My name is Carol Altreuter. I'm a resident of South Kingstown. We relocated here almost thirty years ago, my husband and I and our two sons. They were well-served by the South Kingstown school system. I was already involved from Philadelphia in adult literacy, knowing that not everyone has the opportunity, for various reasons, to be able to succeed and get their high school diploma and then move forward. I've been an elementary and early childhood educator, but I'm devoting, have devoted the last twenty-plus years for adults, because it's a circle, the adults and the children, it's all entwined. When my sons went through South Kingstown High School, they were aware of their, some of their friends who were unable, for various reasons, to complete their education. It's a privilege to be part of an educa- of an educational facility that is nonprofit. We are funded by grants, so we have to prove our worth every year to the feds, and to the state, and to other people that we receive funds from. It's a privilege to be a part of an organization which offers a second opportunity for people who can no longer access the K through twelve system, to go forward, to get that credential, and to move into the workplace, or to the higher education system, to continue to pursue their goals. There are many reasons why adults need this second opportunity, and it extends beyond. I think it's wonderful that we have our home here. As a taxpayer, I don't believe it impacts on me at all, but I'm privileged to, to be in this town that's, that's gonna give a home in a community setting, rather than a government or institutional setting. There'll be many, many more benefits, I think, to the residents of this town in particular. They can walk here, they can get the bus here, but also, the whole county, we were charged over thirty years ago by the Rhode Island Department of Education to provide this service for this county, and we've kept that as our mandate for that many years. Relocating our space is been, is very difficult financially for us, but it's also an opportunity to serve more people in a, in a more friendly environment, not only from South Kingstown, but we're not just taking from South Kingstown. All the other towns that we serve, we go to their boards of education, we go to their town councils, and we say, this many adults, you know, have benefited from our services, not all of them get their GEDs. Some of them are dyslexic and were not provided or, or the instruction they needed, or were not discovered, because teachers twenty years ago were not trained to look for that. So, there are people who are out of a job. They've worked for twenty years in construction or truck driving, and now they're out of a job, because to get that job again, they need their high school diploma. I'm very proud to be assistant of this town, and to be able to, I'm excited to be able to relocate to the center, heart of it, and glad that we can provide services at no more expense to this town, for the whole county. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Members of the council, good evening. My name is Alan, A-L-A-N, Butler, B-U-T-L-E-R. My wife and I live at fifty-nine North Road, where the abutting property owner is facing the next-door neighbor at, at Building C. We're originally part of the old assembly of the old concept. We have lived there for thirty-three years, that's slightly more than half of our married life, and we like the place very much, and what we try to do is not so much be ragtag opposition to what's going on, or limit change, but merely to protect the enjoyment of our own property. We first moved there in nineteen seventy-seven, and within a year or two, Bob O'Neill and his wife asked us to join a, a committee against a school that was asking to come in from Massachusetts. It doesn't matter what the problems were, except that they lied their way through the teeth, and we caught them at it, and they withdrew their nomination and left. So, that was our first relationship. A second relationship with a little combat in our property. Building C was empty, and so a, a local meeting was held by a very nice group, and my wife happened to be out there, and she came back home, I was watching the Red Sox on television or something, and she said, "Why are all those cars in the front yard?" And I said, "What?" And I went out, and there were twenty cars in the front yard. The parking lot was full, so over they came. I went to see them, we straightened that out, and no problem. Next thing in was the commercial building, which dealt with Medicaid and Medicare payments and so forth, and they were a delightful group. The only problem was, they were too big for the parking lot, and time and time again, salesmen and others would end up parking in our yard, and we'd go over there and roust them out and so forth, and, "But I don't have any place to park." And I said, "Well, I'm sorry," but they were, they were fine. But then the owner, the principal owner of that group decided he'd like to have a school located in the area, and that school was to be confined to the four rooms facing the pond at the lower level. I'm assuming that perhaps you know the out, the layout of these buildings. If not, it would be nice if we could have a, a look at it before you made a decision. In a very short time, after kids were climbing on Rottendrin's, and all the promises they made were violated, they broke in half. Half left, half stayed. The half that stayed eventually left because they violated zoning code and fire codes. Their, their physical education consisted of students running around the parking lot while the traffic was moving. The promises they made were beautiful. Now, I taught school here for thirty-five years at the high school. It's my town, I love it, I've been here since nineteen forty-six, but I'm constantly on the defensive for, for misrepresentations. Now, that came to an end when the Universalist Church moved in. The minister, who came to see us five or six times, charming lady, tried to work out... tried to work out everything with us, and did, in fact. Now, as a former teacher, I was always welcoming the school suggestions. When they wanted to move in, they said, "Fine, just do these things and so forth and those." "Oh, of course we will. Of course we will." I noticed that the, the, one of the things is, and one of the existing circumstances, said, "The dumpsters shall be enclosed and secured." Sounds simple. They're enclosed. I don't know when that happened. It was nineteen ninety-five or so that that was passed. Within a week, I asked someone connected with it, I said, "Aren't you going to secure the dumpsters, which are right beside our property?" "Oh, that's too much trouble." So we've had disillusionments in trying to maintain the enjoyment of our property. This is not so with the Universalist Church. They have been grand neighbors, and we love them. This young lady came over to see us for an hour recently, charmed the Sox office. Maggie, of course, has been doing that with, to me for years. But I do have some suggestions. I'm not trying to stop them from coming. But in order to make sure that we don't have to go through this procedure again, my hearing is going, so I missed some of what they said. But I would like to make some suggestions and see them enforced. First of all, there is supposed to be a one-way traffic zone, coming in from across Kersey Road and going out by our property. It's completely ignored. People come tearing in the exit, often at a high rate of speed. I'm really seriously afraid there's going to be an accident there someday, even with the limited traffic we have now. I would love to see that enforced. I would love to see the parking lot, whose stripes are almost faded completely, restored. I walked the property a few days ago. I estimate there are about fifty available parking spots between the north and the south side. The rest of it is almost always used, for one reason or another. Now, the, I probably misunderstood this young lady, but I thought she said they had sixteen staff. If they have sixteen staff, I thought I heard Maggie say eight tonight. If they have sixteen staff, even with some of the students, if that's the proper terminology, arriving by bus, that leaves very few parking spaces for that entire group. And if the church does adopt a Sunday, not a Sunday school, but a nursery school in the lower four rooms, that faculty and the visiting parents, coming and dropping students off and on, will present another problem. Now, if you were to stand at the end of North Road where it joins Kersey Road, once every hour, when the students are going to the college and coming back from the college, the traffic is unbelievable. So they break off and they come through Peasdale, and they come down Kersey Road, and they come down North Road, and it's tremendous. With the additional buildings, which have been built over the years, north and of course the location of the, what we call the dump, the transfer station, the traffic there is getting totally incredible. Now, if we add all these things, we have to find a way to make sure that that traffic is regulated as much as possible. Just as a side issue, you might look, the Traffic Commission ought to look at the end of North Road where it meets the end of Peasdale. It's awfully very difficult to get in and out of there right now. And as I often tell people, well, just wait, it's going to get worse. They keep enlarging the university. The students are going to the car, going to university, one student to one car, one student to one car. So what I, what I really am looking forward to is, once again, is the teacher saying, "Welcome, you know, glad to have you, but please stay home. Let us use our own yard." What the Universal Association did was, at the beginning, put a couple of cones at the joint driveway that we use. And after they had trained all their people, they removed them, and there was no further problem. Except when they have funeral, when people are coming who don't know that that problem exists, and they've ended up in several cases in our yard. Perhaps there could be a sign where that, where those two roads merge, those two exits merge. A formal sign with an arrow each way on it, one saying, "Exit," and the other saying, saying, "Private property." Simple solution. And I would think that perhaps these people, or the Universalist Church, or whoever, could put that up, and probably that would put an end to it once and for all. So really, all we're asking, and I remember when the schools got their guarantee, they were only going to stay for two years, because they were going to build elsewhere. So we said, "They're fine, that's fine, two years." We didn't even bother to go to the next hearing, and they asked for it and got five years. So I don't for the moment doubt that these two people mean what they say. But sometimes, in the zest for their business, what they love to do, people get a little careless. So what I would like you folks to do is say, "Stay home. Stay out of Mr. Butler's yard. Enjoy yourself. Have a good thing." There is one other problem, two other problems, I'm sorry. Has anybody said that the bus schedules will arrive at the same time the school gets out? In other words, are the schools, kids going to come out and say, "Oh, there's the bus." Or they're going to say, "Oh, we got twenty minutes to wait." Where are they going to wait? And what are they going to do while they're waiting? And what control will there be over that? Now, one of the things they might want to do, the church has put out a basketball hoop. When it was first put out, the ball was left with it. Wasn't very long before we had neighborhood basketball games next door, not only with a lot of shouting, but with a lot of foul language. We'd rather not hear that. I checked in the basketball court before I left, the basketball hoop, there's no ball with it. We haven't had any problems with it, with the church. But still, it's a potential. So all I'd ask these people and yourselves to consider is the possible problems that might need a look at. Having taught youngsters for a long time, I know twenty males hanging around the parking lot can get a little boisterous, sometimes out of control. So whatever solutions you have, I've offered some. I would like to see those stipulated and enforced. And maybe while you're at it, you can get them to lock up the dumpster. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and speak? Margaret, go ahead.
I'd like to just give Mr. Butler my personal cellphone. If there are any problems, I'd like to be the first one to know about them. It issue, one of the things that he did break up, bring up were buses. Our students, one of the neat things about this location is the proximity to public transportation. So we would not be having buses coming through the property. We would be using, people would be walking to the nearest bus stop, which I believe is around Kersey Road, that area Liberty Rental.
And how many, just to reiterate, how many staff members do you have in the day?
Staff members on-site.
On-site, yeah.
There's a difference. We have a lot of part-time people. There are only two of us who are full-time. And the rest of the people are part-time. The maximum number that we would have, if we were having a staff meeting, but if we were having a staff meeting, there would not be any students. We have seventeen staff. But we, when we were having staff meetings, there would not be any students around. In a given day, in a given week, during the morning specifically, I would say we'd probably have seven to eight staff members around. And that's at a maximum.
And so you've looked at the property, and have you seen other cars park there at the times? You're saying sometimes it just seems to be other cars that are around even when the church is not in use of new, you notice that just in your review of the property?
When I, I've looked at the, there've been like two or three cars, you know, when I've driven up to, to go into it. But I believe that there'll certainly be enough parking spaces for all.
And I have seen the cones used at, you know, at that facility in the past. I did make some visits to the building that did some of the Medicaid work and stuff for my, for my own job. I mean, would you be adverse to utilizing cones and keeping people, you know?
Not at all. One of the things that we do for students, as they come in, is have an orientation session. So I believe that what we would do is incorporate those, the rules of the house in that orientation session. So that it's written down, it's there, and it's enforced. You know, so that people's rights to domestic tranquility are not violated.
Oh, thank you. We very like that preamble. Any other questions for, no, she sat down. Any comments from the council, or is there anybody else again who would like to speak?
Yeah, just had a question, Ms. Hulk, and shared parking here, are there more than the church and the school? Is this shared parking by all the businesses, all the lessors, lessees in the business?
I'm having trouble hearing you, Ms. O'Neill.
Shared parking. The school and the church are sharing a certain number of spaces, or are the spaces shared by everyone that works at that, at Lilypads?
I believe, and we had our office there some twenty years ago. And what happens, I believe, is that essentially, the folks, if you're looking at the building from the front, the folks whose buildings and offices are on the right-hand side will obviously tend to gravitate towards that side first, and then as close as they can to that side of the building, which would be about in the middle of the property. The parking lot, excuse me, that we're speaking of is to the far left, which is where Building C is located. And that's Mr. Butler's property. And then you can also see the pond, of course, right when you go around the corner of that building. So that's the majority of the parking. That's where we would be located, on that side of the property.
Yeah, I certainly understand that. I just didn't know if those other businesses had more than enough traffic at certain times of the week that force use of the Building C parking area.
I haven't been to that property often in recent years, but anytime I've ever gone by there, I always think it looks like a ghost town.
You ought to stop by more often, Maggie. There's no question that most of the traffic, most of the parking right now faces North Road or is up against the church pot or up in Building A, in that little turnaround. And those are usually quite full. They come and go, but they're quite full. At the south side, there's a dirt parking area. I estimate it could probably take about twenty cars or vehicles, and in the main part, probably forty. But given people coming and going, and especially if this four rooms, which the church wants to use facing the pond, now has teachers and students, or daycare centers, what I think they're talking about, and parents are coming and going, now the problem is getting very complicated. So the suggestions I made at least will funnel some of this activity and hopefully keep it under control. But I leave it to you to make what stipulations you think might be effective, but, and then we can just relax and have our grandkids over and so forth.
And you, you want to have the flow of the traffic, you think is, you think the flow of the traffic isn't going appropriately in there, the, the one-way? Do you think it needs to be labeled more clearly?
Oh, I think the, there's a sign, or there was a sign at the entrance across from Kersey Road, which said, "Not an exit." The sign going out has long since disappeared. People use that coming and going, both ways. They'd be getting away with it, but one of these days, two cars are going to collide there. There's no question about that. But this, it's like everything else, not what it is today, but what's it going to be next week, next month, next year? When we first moved there, at the end of the first day, my wife and I sat out on the stone step and we listened for a while. And what it was, we didn't hear anything. And finally, I said, "Well, look, a car went by." It's not like that anymore.
No, it's not. No, unfortunately, it's not. Well, maybe we could address that, Margaret, with, with the, with the church and that facility to maybe do a little bit more of a clear labeling. I do recall the exit sign where he's talking about again, only because I did business, you know, in there. And I haven't been in there, you know, for a while. But maybe we could work on that signage to get, you know, direction, you know, and make it a little bit, flow a little bit better. Probably would be safer overall. I mean, I don't think that's part of the town to have to do that, because that's really, you know, that, that particular property's, you know, driveway.
Well, I think that the, the property is, the zone changes that have come previously do carry those restrictions. And so what I'm hearing is that, you know, there's a suggestion that that's not being enforced. And if that sign is gone, which I recall that sign from when we were there, that certainly should be replaced. And whether we replace it or whether the association replaces it, I can certainly bring that to the attention of the other owners of that property. The record should reflect, "I always drove out the right way when I was there."
Anybody else have any? Carol, go ahead.
I know the, in the ordinance change, in the change, it says, "No more than seventy-five students be permitted." Is that usually how many you would have at one time?
Those restrictions, unfortunately, the advertising was a little unclear. Though, that whole list of restrictions is applicable to a different use code from us. Okay? That's not us. That's the use code that already exists there. We're proposed use code number twenty-seven, service organization. So there are not any proposed stipulations as of yet.
Oh, so the seventy-five students has nothing to do with your?
No, that has, it's a different building. It's a different use code.
And how many students do you think you would have at one time?
I believe that it's, at one time? Taking classes at the same time, in the morning? Okay. Approximately forty to forty-five.
Oh, okay. And that would be at one given time?
That's correct. Usually in the morning. That would be the highest population Mrs. Benz is telling me.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I guess I didn't hear that in the beginning. I think she had already said.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That's fine. Anybody else? Seven questions for Margaret, while she's up here?
Maggie, does some of the business take place afternoons and evenings, early evenings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it is spread out, but morning is the heavier, heavy standard.
Do you usually have any people lingering around, waiting for the buses? I mean, what's the usual? Are they pretty much out of there? Is it most of them going to be in, in their own cars? I mean, what percentage take public?
Usually people, you know, they go in, they go in for classes, they finish, they leave. They don't typically hang around.
This is an older crew, so I don't think we're going to be swinging in any of the rhododendrons this time. I hate to see them destroyed. I don't want to see that happen to Mr. Butler. I remember his, he was here with his concerns. I remember Mr. Butler talking about this when the Unitarian Church was, was moving in there, and it did seem to work out to be good neighbors for him. And we're not talking about a pre-K, you know, downstairs in this particular, you know, item, agenda, right, that we're looking at. Okay. All right, any other questions then? Anybody else want to speak to this? Do we have a motion to close?
We close the public hearing?
Second.
We get to it here. It's been moved and seconded. All right, do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, moved and seconded. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to write it down. Any other discussion? Hearing done. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously to close. And do I have a motion to what we'd like to do with this particular item?
I move approval of public hearing B.
Nice second that.
Yeah, could you, Polly, there is a proposed motion, and it takes into consideration the findings of fact, consistency with comprehensive plan. Do you see that? Do you see that?
Yeah, I did. I got it.
Ella's got it. Ella, do that. South Kingstown Town Council hereby, do you mind, Polly? Hereby approves public hearing item seven B as detailed in the meeting agenda. In approving this item, the council incorporates the recommendations of the planning board as detailed in its correspondence dated March 10th, 2010, including findings of fact, consistency with the comprehensive community plan, and findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning.
That's what you wanted to say, Polly. Correct it. Okay. And Ella, you're going to second.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Should we amend slightly that maybe some painted arrows or the transportation? How, how can we address Mr. Butler's issue there? It's just very, very minor, but it should go before transportation or planning. I don't know if Vin wants to send those few requests that Maggie's agreed to here. Sign, leave some arrows, striping of the parking lot, parking areas.
Can we have to go to the planning board then? Did he say TRC? I think he did. TRC? For a parking lot, Mike?
Well, I, I mean, if you wanted to say something about directional signage shall be installed and keep it general, then the type of directional signage, I think, certainly can go through the traffic review committee, et cetera.
And also probably the placement of the cones too, just to, you know, get people the boundary lines and get used to that.
Yeah, there's one right there.
We need that so nobody trips, Mike. You are the lawyer, you know. Okay.
I mean, you can add, if that's what you want to do, you can, you can add to your motion that directional signage shall be installed in accordance with the recommendations of the traffic, is it the Traffic Commission, Traffic Review Commission? Let's see, official title, Vin.
TRC.
Okay. That way, you can leave it up to them to figure out what the best signage would be, and you won't have to figure that out up here.
That sounds good.
Just so moved for a second.
All right, do you want to amend that, Polly?
I do. I amend it.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, please say.
Wait, oh, Margaret, sorry. Just, I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
I, I need to clarify as to whether or not, if the council is to approve this, whether we can take occupancy and then go to the traffic thing as soon as possible and not hold it up until after the traffic committee meets.
Yes, I, I think that's, yeah, that would be follow-up for it. Yes, is that okay? Yeah, okay. All right, thanks, Mr. Butler. All right, so now, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And I hope you do make very good neighbors. We want to keep Mr. Butler happy.
Thank you very much.
We really want to. And Mrs. Butler, don't let, I don't want to. You come and tell us, Mr. Butler. You come, you come and tell us if there's a problem. And put, and put a lock on the, and the garbage too, by the way. Okay. I don't want to be demanding that from the pulpit here, but, you know. All right, we are moving on to communications items. And we are going to communication item H. I'm going to say it loudly over everybody. H.
Are you on on TV?
H is a resolution. Ouch. Excuse me. Could we still, pardon us at home, we're just going to, they're very happy. That's nice.
It's a celebration.
It's a celebration. All right, we're going to move on with the rest of the, rest of the meeting, please. All right, so item H is a resolution adopted March 23rd, 2010 by the Portsmouth School Committee concerning the Rhode Island Department of Education Proposed Education Funding Formula is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. What is the council's wish on this particular item?
Place it on file.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I, I think that we talked at the beginning of the, the meeting and, I should say, is any for, yeah, the school committee, I believe, is going to be working on, one that I think might go a little bit further. I think that's what we talked about, that we'll be looking. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is aye, communication aye, resolution adopted March 29th, 2010 by the Tiverton Town Council in support of proposed legislation that will allow Rhode Island municipalities to postpone budget and financial town meetings for the 2010-2011 year for up to 90 days is received, placed on file, and town council further directs council. What did we talk about at the work session?
We also talked about this at the work session, and we decided to place this on file. Motion to approve. New business, aye. Place it on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
As Steve said, it might be a little difficult to operate without tax revenues.
Without a certified rule. That makes it difficult. Okay. Any other thing? Any other comments? No, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Oh, no, I guess it passes unanimously. Sorry, I'm a little tired myself. All right, next we have comments from interested citizens. If there's anybody who would like to come forward and state a comment, please come to the microphone. Come to the microphone and state your name clearly. For the record.
John Hadley, 18 Ledgewood Road, Kingston. And myself and Mr. Jay Newsom of Crestwood Drive are here to submit a petition. And if you would like, as a start, to have a copy of this petition.
Sure. If you'd like to give it to the clerk.
I have enough copies for everyone, would you?
Okay, just give it to our clerk, and then if you'd like to read it, that'd be fine too.
This is the original petition. The original signatures. Again, give it to Dale, she can disseminate to us.
Go right ahead, Mr. Hadley.
As an, as a, an introduction, I'd just like to make a few comments about this petition. Mr. Jay Newsom of 46 Crestwood Drive, and Mr. John Hadley, myself, of 18 Ledgewood Road, Kingston, Rhode Island, wish to submit to the South Kingstown Town Council on this date, April 12th, 2010, the following petition, which requests that the council consider to place an immediate moratorium on building permits in the Biscuit City and the Little Rest areas, which, these areas, which would require special use permits designed to grant relief from existing town wetland setbacks and wetland stream setbacks. This petition is presented in light of the recent record rainfalls in Rhode Island that have created extensive flooding to home and properties throughout the state. The signatories to this petition represent one resident from each listed address, and we were able to collect 63 signatures, and we think if we had had more time, we had to do this over the weekend, we fully believe that we could have collected many more. Just one correction to that, I think one resident, two people signed, so we'll drop that back to 63. The majority of these households, and this is all within the Little Rest and the Biscuit City area, have had some flooding or water damage to their homes and property. Many were still continuing to attempt to recover from the damage as late as this past weekend. And all were frustrated and angry, these people, that we took these names and addresses from. This frustration stems from the feeling that the cause of this flooding, aside from the excessive rainfall, can be attributed to excessive construction and building on marginal properties located on an extensive hillside area, meaning that area that drains down from the top of Little Rest, down onto the Biscuit City area, on down to Springdale, and on into the woodlands above East Farm. That extensive hillside area that has no adequate municipal drainage, the combination of these conditions significantly exacerbated the impact from the flooding. We would like to see the town council take immediate action tonight, if possible, to implement this proposed moratorium because of the widespread and continuing impact on the town's citizens' property and the town's infrastructure. These are economically hard times for many Rhode Island residents. We witnessed that ourselves up on, up on Little Rest area. The unexpected expense of repairing water damage can be a great burden to many people, and we hope that by implementing the suggestions of the moratorium, future damage might be alleviated. If you would like, I can write, read through the moratorium, the petition that we propose.
Mike, what's your?
We'd like to make, we'd just like to.
I have to turn to our lawyer on this.
Emphasize some of its points.
Yeah. Certainly, the gentleman can summarize if he wants to. You cannot take action on this tonight. Because it's, it's not on, it's not on your agenda. You can't take action. However, you can certainly refer, you can direct that, I mean, you could refer to planning, to on the planning board, et cetera. I mean, this would require ordinance amendments, et cetera. So you, you, they will not be able to legally actually vote on anything tonight, but they certainly, if they desire, can refer it to the appropriate department for review.
Okay. You realize that we can't because it's not on the agenda.
Well, yes, in effect, I do. Yes, of course. But may I read the petition? Is that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Just, just to emphasize some of these points. To the South Kings, excuse me, to the South Kingstown Town Council, from the residents of Little Rest and Biscuit City areas of Kingston. Subject, a petition to place an immediate moratorium on building permits in the Biscuit City and Little Rest areas, which require, which would require special use permits, which would grant relief from existing town wetland and wetland stream setbacks in that Biscuit City and Little, Little Rest area of Kingston. We, the undersigned, petition the town council to impose an immediate moratorium on building permits requiring special use permits, which grant relief from existing town wetland and wetland stream setbacks in the Biscuit City and Little Rest areas of Kingston. We request this moratorium for the following reasons. The precipitation during the month of March 2010, which came to 19.37 inches, has continued a significant trend of increasing precipitation in Kingston. It's about a 6% increase this decade. Average annual rainfall in Kingston, as measured by the University of Rhode Island Plant Research Center on Plains Road since 2001, is 55 inches, and since 2005, it is 57.6 inches. And this figure would be higher if the 2007 rainfall of 46.88 inches is disregarded. The increase in rainfall, the increased number of building built or proposed requiring special use wetland deviations, and the inadequacy and the inappropriateness of storm drainage available on that side of the hill, that runoff from Little Rest down to Biscuit City and on, on down the hill, has resulted in, threatens to create additional damage to individual property owners, wetland barrier trees, and plant growth, and to the wetlands themselves. And, and that, that point is because all of, all of this ecosystem is important to the, to the removal of water from this drainage area. Paragraph two, in addition to the continuing problem of water pushing up and destroying the pavement at the corner of Ledgewood and Springdale Roads, that's been a continuing problem from the get-go, I believe, even though I haven't lived there that long, other people will, will and could or will speak of it. The storms, the March storms caused further deterioration and the creation of similar problems about a third of the way up the Ledgewood Road hill. At that point, the water is actually bubbling out of the ground and taking the pavement with it. That road is not going to last very long. The proposed construction of a home, particularly requiring a special use permit for wetland exception on lot 123, plat 31 hyphen 2, on the top southwest side of Ledgewood, which is at the corner, the, I will call it the south corner of Ledgewood and Biscuit City Road, will require that the roof drainage be directed toward Ledgewood Road, and will remove trees along 120 feet of the Ledgewood side of that lot at the top of the hill where it intersects Biscuit City Road. A setback exception for the house will place at 15 feet from the lot line on Ledgewood Road. We believe that that additional drainage resulting from the proposed construction will exacerbate damage to Ledgewood Road, causing inconvenience to residents and a significant expense to the town for road maintenance. Furthermore, additional construction on other special use wetland exception properties up the hill from Biscuit City Road, and we're talking about about eight lots, five or eight lots up in the Little Rest area, will create an additional load on the catch, on the catch basin area and culvert under Biscuit City Road, because all that drainage comes right down to a basin on Mr. Storm's property, accumulates, and then tries to get through about a 24-inch culvert. It's, it's already showing signs of wear and tear. This catch basin and culvert system has overflowed on a number of occasions, literally overflowed. I mean, it's gone right over the road over the past years, and has the potential to wash away that section of Biscuit City Road. And if that section goes, you're going to have some very, very unhappy people. Part three, we request this moratorium to be placed immediately and continue until an appropriate assessment can be made of the impact that the March rainstorms had on wetland boundaries, buffer trees, and vegetation. On lot 123, the previously mentioned lot, we believe that the change in the stream flow in the wetland areas requires a new assessment by DEM. Based on observations of the stream since November 29th, and these observations aren't just by myself and Mr. Newsom, they are by the, by the whole contiguous neighborhood, we have noted that intermittent flow of the stream significantly exceeds the 10 feet. And, and if it does, it would require a different and greater setback for structures that would go into those prop, into that property and septic, and setbacks for septic systems. We are concerned that future hurricanes or rainstorms with significant winds will result in loss of additional wetland buffer trees. Even without winds during the March storm, several major trees were uprooted on lot 123 because the roots just got saturated, and the trees decided to come down. We are concerned that any additional buildings on this hillside, again, the whole, the whole drainage hillside from, from Little Rest on down, will result in a major impact on a fragile ecosystem, groundwater aquifers, and a strong potential to cause damage to homes and property from uprooted trees. We further request that this moratorium be in place until a major review and upgrade to storm drainage in this area can be accomplished. Furthermore, we request that the town consult with the State Water Resources Board and the Kingston Water District regarding the impact of the March storm and potential future storms and hurricanes, which could cause contamination to the aquifer with effluent from conventional septic systems, many of which exist up in the Little Rest area and in the Biscuit City area. There aren't, there aren't, we, well, I won't go into that part, but the newer systems are not prolific in this area. And effluent from conventional septic systems and other chemicals and contaminants by flooding and saturating properties all along the side of the hill. It should be noted that the property on lot 123 is located in the Groundwater Protection Overlay District. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward. As the council, we don't have to vote on it, but if the council so chooses, we could refer this on, as Mike had suggested, to the planning board.
Well, I think that's a good idea. Refer it to planning.
Yeah, I, I've certainly sold properties up there. You always hope that you don't get the home to sell in this area because they've lost their values, a major part of the value in their homes. This has been a problem for years. That side of the University of Rhode Island, from Parkwood down, is an absolute, well, it is part of GPOD, and it's really very, very difficult. I went up there this past weekend. I mean, the skunk cabbage on this particular lot, almost right next to where the foundation lines are going to be, this is absurd that they could build on this property. Absolutely absurd. And this is before the zoning board now. At some point, and I've asked this of Michael before, at some point, there's got to be equity here for property rights between the butters and neighbors and neighborhoods and the developers, and there seems not to be a balance. It always seems to be uphill, that these folks have to become victims, lose tremendous value in their homes before there's any response from us. So I'd agree with Carol that this really should be looked at by the planning board. This has got to be serious that we looked at. Matter of fact, this storm gives us an opportunity to review some of the major projects that right now we're looking at, such as Fieldstone up there on Stony Fort and Old North Road, and Absolute Swamp, even South County Country Club, it's now part of Warden Pond. I mean, there are areas here we've really got to reconsider when it comes to our regulations, our zoning ordinances. And maybe we should consider some areas of town, like we do the oceanfront, a flood zone, a flood zone. Maybe that's how it should be considered, but we need to tackle this right away because we've got hundreds of homes, if not thousands, here in town where folks have lost a lot of value in their properties, a lot of heartaches, a lot of headaches, and I think they really need to look to the planning department and see what kind of relief, or what's fair and reasonable for both property rights, the butters as well as developers, and I, I think that's in a direction that we need to go. So I would agree with Carol that I'd like the planning to undertake this as soon So I would agree with Carol that I'd like planning to undertake this as soon as possible.
There may be legal issues that might not be able to be overcome by the planning department with people who have the properties and, you know, continue to develop. I mean, the property on Ledgewood, I mean, how many, how many years have we been dealing with that particular property and it just keeps coming back to us that they're going to be building on one little piece of corner of the thing? Sometimes you just can't stop it. I mean, it's certainly something that we can send on to the planning board, but legally there might be challenges to this that we, we might not be able to overcome. I understand it's wet, we've been down there, we've torored it, we've looked at those, those facilities, we've seen that road crumbling down there, you know, that might never change because of the development that's already occurred there, but I mean, it's certainly something that planning could look at. I mean, this was a, as they say, I don't know if it's a 100-year flood or a 500-year flood, it might, it might never happen again. I hope to God that it doesn't for, for, you know, everybody in the state of Rhode Island. But, you know, it's, legally, there might be a challenge to this that we might not be able to, I mean, just to be upfront with you. I mean, it's certainly something that we can look at, but these are things that you have to, you know, also know that might come our way.
And I certainly agree with you, Kathy. You know, property rights sometimes takes a brutal turn, but it is in a GPOD district, and there's no reason why a zoning can't adjust for a GPOD. Maybe only allowed one bite at the apple, one special use permit instead of multiple variances, but it does have to change, and we just can't allow these poor folks to become victims, and especially in an area like that. That has always been a wet, and that's why it is in the GPOD area. That is a high water table area, and so we, we didn't need a 100-year storm to prove that this has been a problem.
No, no, we didn't with some of them, but again, I, I know that they, I'm sure that pretty much, I would assume most of the majority of those houses over there were flooded with this past storm, just because it's just so wet over there to begin with. Maybe, maybe we should have never built there anyways to be, to begin with, however many years ago when those houses went in, but, you know, they're there and people do own some of that property, so there could be certainly some challenges that, you know, come forward. Again, planning board could certainly take a look at it. I don't, I don't have interest in that.
How we do some developments, maybe insurance bond can be put up to protect the neighbors for 10 or 20 years. If all of a sudden your neighbor and, and your septic system is flooded out from storm water discharge from above your home, maybe changes have got to be made there too, and maybe we handle it like a new development, when they put in drainage and sewers and water lines. Just some thoughts.
Yeah, we can let planning take that. Sir, please state your name for the record.
My name is Jude, my name is Jude Newsom. I live at 46 Crestwood Drive. John and I went around this weekend and did the survey, and I can tell you that, as he said, the people in Little Rest, Parkwood, and Biscuit City are very angry. They're angry because they're shoveling stuff out of their basement that they believe came from their uphill neighbors' septic systems. So I think the town has a real problem here, and it's got to understand that the conventional systems flood the downhill houses. Furthermore, I think the United States Supreme Court has said that the town has, towns have the right to enforce their ordinances, and certainly the town does not want to get into lawsuits, but at a certain point, the town has to take a stand to enforce its own laws. And, you know, that may be where this, this is going, and I say that in response to what, what you said earlier only. I just want to make a brief statement, and that is, I'm disappointed that we can't do something tonight. I really think that the Town Council should do something tonight, but I understand that you're, that you can't. But we've got to realize that we have an opportunity here in South Kingston to take the lead in the state of Rhode Island, because this is a problem statewide, and we should proceed very rapidly to put a moratorium in place and investigate what is now the new benchmark 100-year flood. We all have to understand, this is the new benchmark. Everything else is out the window. From now on, that March flood has got to be looked at as the 100-year, and it's got to be, everything we're doing has got to be gauged on that. The stream, the streams have changed, the wetlands have changed, the impact of building on wetlands on butters has changed, and we've got to recognize that in our laws, regulations, and our planning, for instance, maybe those, in, in the groundwater overlay districts, they ought to be reclassified as R40 would very simply take care of the problem. The town can do many things, as we were talking earlier about the, the, the situation with the gun regulations and the gun retail sales and alcohol and everything else. It's not a matter of taking anybody's rights, it's a matter of the greater good, and this town is in danger of making itself much less desirable and destroying property value all over the town if it doesn't realize that we've saturated the town. I would really think that everyone in this town, builders, developers, and realtors, would be in favor of a moratorium to reexamine what's happened, take a step back, and find out how it's impacted us, and then go forward. Maybe these lots should be built on, but in the meantime, we should put a moratorium on it, study it scientifically with appropriate expertise, and then go forward. And thank you very much.
Okay. So...
My name's Carl Storm. I live at 160 Biscuit City Road, and there's adjacent, on part of my property adjacent to my house, there's a wetland, it's probably about 8,000 square feet, that takes water that comes out of Potter Woods, and the water in Potter Woods will accumulate to a level where it tops over a causeway on the east side of my land, and it will completely fill up this 8,000-square-foot catchment area, then top over Biscuit City Road by 12 to 24 inches. And that happened in March of 2007 when we had a heavy rainstorm, and it happened again in this recent flood. So the amount of water that's coming out of Potter Woods and down through that ravine has increased manyfold since I moved there in 1993, and whether that's a microclimate or whether it's an indication of larger climate changes in Rhode Island, I don't know. But between the rising water table and the amount of runoff that is coming out of Potter Woods, those neighborhoods have changed, I think, rather dramatically in the amount of water that they're forced to deal with in, in a heavy rainstorm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Storm. I think this gentleman, and then you can be next.
My name is Ira Gross. I live at 88 Springdale Drive, although it was formerly called 40 Springdale Drive before the town renumbered everything. Occasionally, I still get mail for other people, and they get mail for me because of the change. I have lived in the property longer than any of the other people who have spoken to you, so I've had a chance over nearly 40 years to see what has happened across the cycle of rain and snow that comes through Biscuit City. I've seen the improvements where they have put in drains that didn't exist when I first moved there. We're much appreciated, but they are not sufficient to really clear the roads, Biscuit City or my road, Springdale, or coming down Ledgewood. There are still a lot of underground springs. We have such a high water table that they press up through the macadam into the road, and even though the road gets repaired fairly frequently, still, within the past two weeks, we have had to make deviations because there are parts of the road that are simply not there anymore. Building in the area is excessive. There is no way that further development can take place in that area. It's just too impacted. We built down the end of Biscuit City when it turned into a new development. There is still no egress except from Biscuit City for the more than 200 people who are living along that road to come, to access 138. As some of the other speakers have told you, the overflow from Potter Wood will very frequently, and we don't need the storms that you have now, because we have the streams running constantly all year long, summer and winter, they are running, and they will overflow Biscuit City. So people who are not wise enough, who go too fast, will pay the penalty of having their cars trapped in this recess in the road. Whether it can be corrected in any way by the town, I don't know. I am pleased to say that the town put up two signs on Biscuit City Road, no parking signs, so thank you for that. The students have paid attention to it. The messes that we had from their use have gone away, but the water hasn't, and that is still the main problem there. We do have a lot of wetland in this area. This is about the highest point that we're talking about. The crest of the hill is right at the crossroads with 138 and 108, 102, Kingston Road. But all of that water doesn't flow east, it flows west, and it comes down our area, not just the roads, but the homes. Fortunately, I have no cellar. I live on a slab that doesn't protect me because I am built into the hill. So I still, even with French drains around the house, with this excessive rain, I still get water coming in. This is not a basement I'm talking about now. This is my kitchen as well as my functional area where I have all of my utilities. So I get some in there too, not as much as other people have, but I still don't like the idea that this is the first time in 40 years that I've had any water in my house at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. I think this gentleman in the front row wanted to speak. Yep, you.
Madam President, members of the Town Council. My name is Bob Sneepock, and I live at 41 Laurel Ridge Road in South Kingston, where I have lived for the past 22 years. Over those 22 years, I have attended the parades on Memorial Day and on Veterans Day. I've gone to these parades probably out of habit. Our, our children are all grown, and so it was kind of a habit, almost a reflex as a result, probably of having spent just short of 25 years as an Army officer from 1959 to 1984. Because of that time in the Army, I'm, I'm probably more likely than, than some others to understand the difference between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Simply, and I, I understand that many of you know this, but Veterans Day recognizes all women and men serving in the military. Memorial Day remembers and honors those who have died serving in the military. All veterans on Veterans Day, those who have died on Memorial Day. That distinction, that very fundamental difference, has, over the past years, past few years, been very much on my mind, perhaps in part because since we ended the draft and established Volunteer Army, the, the sacrifices of men and women in the military are not, I believe, not as conspicuous as they once were. And that's true, especially of those who have made what is, has been euphemistically called the ultimate sacrifice, that is, again, those who have died. So the parade on Memorial Day seems to me, that is, the festive parade on Memorial Day seems to me inappropriate. The ceremony at Sagatuck Park should be the focal point of the day. The laying of a wreath, the playing of the National Anthem, playing of taps, a prayer, a short speech, those kinds of traditional ceremonial acts should be conducted in a solemn and dignified manner. Now, indeed, an honest and diligent attempt has been made to do that, but that attempt is made very difficult by the fact that parade participants, who have chosen not to participate in the Sagatuck Ceremony, the wreath-laying ceremony, they all create a very distracting noise and in fact are often quite boisterous. That's understandable, but it's a fact. I propose that a parade limited to military units, including veterans groups, of course, scout units, firefighters, police officers, and similar organizations, and a band comprise the parade, and that the parade begin on Robinson Street, between the old post office and Healy's, up and down there, and end at Sagatuck Park. Now, if you, finally, finally, if you conclude that this would be a break in tradition, perhaps you would consider having a festive parade with floats and so forth on Armed Forces Day, which is celebrated on the third Saturday in May, and limit Memorial Day to a ceremony at Sagatuck Park. I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you for your attention and your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sneepock. Okay. All right, and I guess we're referring this on to the planning board for the other item. Okay, all right. Are there any other...
Yeah, to the planning board, but I, I haven't done anything other than come here tonight and make this proposal. If, if I need to do something else in a formable letter or something, I'll take your advice at another time.
I think the, I think the best thing that we could do is to put you in, in touch with the, with the, the veterans group which runs the parades. The town isn't a coordinator for the parades. We provide a general contribution for each of those two parades, but it goes through the, through the veterans organization. What I'd like to do is to get you in touch with the parade organizers so that they can hear what your thoughts and concerns are, and we'll do that through, through the town manager's office, if that's okay with the council.
No, that's fine. All right. All right, so we'll take care of that, Madam, Mr. Sneepock, and we'll send on your regards. And then, I just didn't, I felt that we'd kind of left the other one opened, and I was kind of addressing both of them there at the same time. One, so we'll send on your, your letter to the planning board and, you know, see what their thoughts are on it, then we're referring this to you.
And Kathy, if I might, I believe this one particular lot and project is before the zoning board. I don't know if they've closed the public hearing, but I think this storm has defined a new range of what this community needs to do, and if these people are victims and being harmed, I think the zoning board needs to know that there is a general concern and would like planning to look at it.
I think what, what we will do with the petition that was received tonight is I'll have the Planning and Conservation do the review on that, and legal staff, I'll ask them to provide an options memo for the council as far as what policy decisions they can make. I'll also provide through legal staff clear information as far as what the taking of property means and what the financial implications can be. This is a much broader issue than just dealing, if a moratorium is to deal with one specific lot, it's different than if we're talking about dealing with the need for a hydrology study that looks at, at, at different patents that may have changed. Certainly, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to get expert testimony that's going to say that based on what's happened in March, that, that's setting a new standard rather than, than it being an anomaly that, that we may be faced with. But what we'll do is we'll collect that information and get that information to the council as soon as reasonably possible.
And I certainly appreciate that, and I'm glad Mr. Storm had a chance to talk because he talked about the 2007 storm, just not a few weeks ago. So we, we have a problem in this particular area of the community, and so I... So we have a problem in this particular area of the community, and so I appreciate everyone addressing this.
Okay. And do we want Mr. Sneepock to write a letter, his comments for?
No, in fact, what I'm going to do is have Andy get his name and number, and then we'll take care of it as far as coordinating with him.
Okay. I thought he had a letter there that seemed like pretty eloquent, but that's fine if you want to do it that way. Okay, great. All right. Any other comments from the citizens? Again, please come forward and state your name.
If I may, my name is Ira Gross, and I spoke before. What I didn't include in my statement is the fact that across from our property on the west side of the road of Springdale, that property, when I first moved there, was owned by the property manager for the University of Rhode Island. He was going to will that land to the Kingston Improvement Association. However, a change in his life situation caused him to withdraw that and then put most of the property up for sale, which then permitted three houses to be built on wetland. There's no doubt that they were wetland. Those houses are still there, and unfortunately, they float in the wetland, and they don't need the rain that we've had to do it because the wetland is on both sides of their property and behind them. So they are at the low edge of the hill, so the water comes back towards them and down towards them. No one will ever build on that side of the road anyway, although some people have attempted to. Or at the bottom of Ledgewood, three years ago, a man came, he bought the lowest lot on Ledgewood, cut down the trees, and I went to him, he wasn't very polite. I asked him, a young man, "Do you intend to build here?" He said, "What's your business?" I said, "Well, I do live here, I'm just being courteous as a potential neighbor." He says, "Well, I haven't made up my mind." Circumstances, the size of the lot, and the water prevented him from ever doing anything with it, and the lot stands there, unused at all, at the bottom of Ledgewood.
But it's still...
Thank you.
But, excuse me, Mr. Gross?
Mr. Gross?
Mr. Gross, excuse me. Yeah, but he has not given that land to KIA. He still owns that privately, so he still could build on it.
Excuse me?
He has not gifted that land to the KIA, but he still owns that land privately, so he...
No, no, no. First of all, he's deceased, but he doesn't own anything there.
All right, but...
He gave up all that land. The edge of the land, when you come down Ledgewood and make your turn into Springdale, on your right, the west side of the road, that first section, I don't know who actually owns it. I think it's still the Kingston Improvement Association. I don't really know.
Might be the Kingston Fire District who owned a lot of that land long ago, too. But anyway, it's something we'll look at.
Yeah, but I don't think anyone intends to build there. But the first lot you come to is now more than a hundred yards up Springdale on the right. The first house, which is no longer occupied, it's been vacant off and on for some time. The next house has been continuously occupied, and the following house has been continuously occupied.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. All right, moving on, we go to the Town Manager's Report. Steve?
I think we're going to stay on water. I do want to make notice that the town has had FEMA, and FEMA has agreed to open up a disaster recovery center in South Kingston. That center was opened today at the Wakefield Mall at 150 Old Tower Hill Road. So it's in the parking lot in front of the shores. The center will be open daily from 8:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m., until further notice. The center will provide opportunities for all of the town residents who have a need to file with FEMA for any type of assistance that is available through the federal government. At this point, there are eight similar centers that have been placed in operation. We will be servicing principally South Kingston, North Kingston, and Narragansett areas. There is a facility also open in Westerly that is looking toward the Charleston/Westerly area for service. It's a full range of services that will be available at that office. For business purposes, businesses will need to register with FEMA. However, FEMA is not the agency. It would be the Small Business Administration, which serves as the bank for FEMA, that would be dealing with any types of loans that may be available to the business community that have been adversely affected by the flood of last Tuesday. So again, that center is open. We want the public to be aware of it. We want them to be able to make use of it. They will be able to either file online or go specifically to that center and be able to talk with representatives from the agency. There'll be coordination with the field forces for FEMA that will actually be doing the inspections of the properties once the claims have been filed. So I think that's an important first step for our residents, to be able to have the direct contact with FEMA in the community. Moving on from the center itself, I do want to also place on the record my thanks to all of the people that have been involved over the last two weeks in terms of dealing with the flooding issues in South Kingston. From the public safety departments, including the Police Department, EMS, Fire Services, Communications, all of those agencies have been taxed and have provided exemplary services for ensuring public health and safety being maintained in the community. At the height of the flood, we had approximately thirty roads that were either closed or partially closed, and logistics were difficult in terms of ensuring that we could get fire vehicles, police, and EMS vehicles. Public Services Department, including the Streets and Highway, Public Grounds, Water Department, and Sewer Department, all worked hand in hand to be able to ensure that those services were not lost in the community. Planning Department and Finance Department have also helped in terms of the coordination with GIS mapping, which has been provided to each of the public safety services to know where they can go and get through the town. The town's also had the coordination efforts with the State EMA, the State Department of Transportation, and DEM. Senator Cisnowski was also instrumental in us getting Route 138 open in terms of her coordination with DOT on the town's behalf. We've had the federal representation with both Senator Reed's office and White House. Both have been to South Kingston, both have reviewed in detail what the flooding implications were of the community, and have pledged their assistance in terms of providing not just the short-term FEMA assistance, but long-term assistance if, in fact, there's additional post-storm remediation actions that can or should be taken. We've also coordinated with the transfer station operators that have extended hours as a means of providing greater opportunity for people to dispose of the materials from the storm. At this point, we still have two roads, one that's partially open, which is Greenhill Beach Road, that's partially open as of today. I say partially because the center of the road is passable, yet there still is serious flooding on both sides of the road, which during nighttime hours would be difficult to traverse if there were two-way traffic going through that road. The Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road is closed still between Moonstone Beach and the Mattoonik Beach Road and Moonstone Beach. That's the last area that we have. I can't impress enough upon the public how appreciative we are of the services that each of those departments have provided, and also we recognize the amount of property damage, that private property damage that's occurred. To date, the town has spent approximately seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars on material supplies and overtime. We're anticipating that, once we get the initial road infrastructure back in place with a temporary patch, we've got to go back and do it with permanent patch. I will also mention tonight that we will see State DOT closing ministerial road between Tucker Town and Curtis Corner Road, probably for most of next week. They will be replacing the two culverts below that road for the Mink Brook, which was washed out during that storm, and reconstructing the road area of approximately six hundred feet of roadway that'll have to be reconstructed. DOT is doing that next week while the school buses aren't running because it'll be school vacation. So there's been a lot of coordination. I think that there's still a great deal of work that's going to, that necessarily needs to be done. The storm also seriously impacted the Mattoonik shoreline. We've had extensive erosion that creates concerns for the public health and safety of that area, particularly on being able to protect the long-term preservation of the road itself between the Vanilla Bean and the cottages. So what we have to look at at this point is, we're preparing a report for the council that will look at the whole Mattoonik area issues. We'll also then be developing additional reports, one that'll look at the Peasdale area, and based on the discussions tonight, we'll be looking in the Kingston area as well. Whether these floods are indicative of change in weather patterns or whether they're an anomaly is something that no one's going to be able to but speculate on at this point. But we do know that the infrastructure that we do have in place at this point is not capable of being able to accommodate a nine-inch storm, particularly one that comes after a four-inch storm from two weeks before that. So I think that the town is in good shape at this point, other than the property damages that we are aware of. The infrastructure is back where we have the road networks where they should be, but there's still a great deal of work that needs to be accomplished. So we will continue to keep the council up to date on that, and certainly any questions that the public has, if they can't get the answers through FEMA, if they contact the Manager's Office, we will deal with those type of questions and hopefully have assistance from our congressional delegation in terms of dealing with any of the issues that specifically deal with federal money. So I'll answer any questions the council has. If not, that's the only item I planned on reporting on this evening.
Any questions for Steve from the council?
Just one quick one.
Yeah, cool.
I'll try to make it quick. Steve, a lot of questions with FEMA. They sometimes give grants, most of the time loans. Is there a definition that can help people in advance?
There is probably twelve different programs that are there. The major thing that we need to do is to get people to deal with it. A lot of them are dealing with people that are displaced from their homes. If they're displaced from their homes, then there's rental payments and temporary housing availabilities. A lot of it is fashioned on what is left after your personal insurances have either paid or have provided denials. There are some grants for home repairs and replacements of essential household items. There are grants to replace personal property that's been lost. But again, there's terms and conditions for all of that. There's even unemployment compensation for people that have lost their jobs as a result of their place of employment being flooded out. So there's low-interest loans available to businesses. But the best way for people to understand what they're eligible for is to be able to have the direct consultation with the FEMA representatives at this point. There may be no benefit to somebody, but at least they have the opportunity to find out what those are. And as I said, there'll be other things that'll come along. The businesses really need to be registered with FEMA to be able to get to Small Business Administration.
Thank you.
Did you say I'm going to say something? No. No, I think the council does recognize that the public safety, certainly the Union Fire District and the volunteers, really were way above in every community, but specifically here in our own town and the Communications, the Sewer Department. I mean, everybody was out in full force, and I think the council appreciates that, and we feel badly about the loss for anybody that they suffered in this past flood. One of the persons that Steve didn't mention was himself, because I know that he has been working tirelessly, you know, dealing with the FEMA people. I know he's been dealing with the senators, both Jack Reed and even this Saturday with Sheldon Whitehouse, for a second time with Sheldon Whitehouse, in the area reviewing the damage. So it's not a nine-to-five job for Mr. Alfred, and he was working until, I think, about 1:30 Saturday in his own time, showing the damage around the town. So Steve, I appreciate all your efforts that you've put in over the past, you know, week and a half here since the storm has gone on because, you know, it's, a lot has fallen on your shoulders in the past couple of weeks, so we appreciate everything that you did, along with everybody, all the other department heads in the town. It's certainly put a lot of stress on this town, and I think that we came through, you know, with flying colors, you know, really stood together. So thank you for that.
I thank you for saying that, but, you know, I think Andy and I have had some long hours on dealing with a lot of things, but I do think it's really important for people to recognize our fire departments, because our fire departments are all volunteer. Our volunteer fire departments, both the Kingston District and the Union District, pumped out several hundred basements, and in some cases went back to the same basements twice and three times. Union District started with eleven pumps and was down to one pump as of, I think, as of Saturday. And it was a tireless effort that they continued to do that work. And it's not a case where they're getting time and a half or even straight time. These are volunteers that are committing to the community. So a great deal of respect for those fire districts, and certainly the volunteer effort is exemplary in this community.
Absolutely agree. Absolutely concur. Okay, let's move on now to the Town Solicitors' Report. Mike? All set, okay. And the appointments, we really didn't get a chance to go through any of those this evening. Okay, next time, yes. All right, that's what we'll do. And so we move on to, we did new business item A and B. We're on to C, a resolution authorizing the Town Manager on behalf of the Town of South Kingston to execute the original roadway investment local equity aid program, federal and state funds agreement, and the supplemental clarification of federal requirements of local equity aid program, LEAP. Federal and state funds agreements for the Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road project is further described in the memorandum to the Public Service Director to the Town, from, excuse me, the Public Service Director to the Town Manager, dated April 6, and entitled roadway investment local equity aid program, Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road reconstruction. Steve?
This is for the Mattoonik Beach Road project. When we're dealing with federal regulations and state regulations, I've never seen more things that we're signing off on to be able to receive this money, but I think we're in good shape. You've already approved the LEAP program on the bridge project. This is the one for Mattoonik Beach Road. This would be for the paving between Moonstone and Greenhill Beach Road.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item C.
Second.
You've been seconded. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And next, we move on to a movie.
The movie.
And we're going to move out to the audience area so we can see this. This is from, I bless Leslie for staying here. This is our...
Kathy, I wanted to also say that, what I do want people to know is that on the council's agenda this evening on the Internet is a link to be able to bring the public to the, to this, so that they can watch the entire, on the, what's the website it said it's on?
It's on YouTube, the local Peasdale, and also on YouTube, Peasdale, the location.
And it's, on the YouTube is a direct connection from the council agenda. So anybody that's following at home or that looks at the council's agenda for tonight's meeting will have a direct link to the video.
Okay, good, good to clarify that. Okay.
Yeah, I can see. Located near the coast of southern Rhode Island, Peastale deserves recognition as an example of an important New England phenomenon, the textile mill village. Founded by Rowland Hazard I in the early 1800s, it was named after Hazard's wife, Mary Peace, and developed to accommodate the mostly Irish and Italian workers of the Peastale Manufacturing Company. In 1984, a large portion of the village was designated a National Register Historic District. Today, Peastale still bespeaks what was sought in the early 19th century, a community living in sweet harmony with itself. From a village once comprised of just five houses, a textile and a grist mill, one store, and 30 inhabitants, an area then known as the flats, a community continues to blossom, reawakening to more modern times.
I lived in several places in Peastale, but the one that I remember the most is the one that was right in the flat. I learned to jitterbug in the, you know, in the garage parking lot there. Louis Martella came back from the war and taught me how to do that. I think it was wonderful because everybody knew everybody. You could walk anywhere. The rotary, it's a gathering place, I think, for people. If there was a focal point of the flat, that was probably it. Well, I think if you look around New England, there was always either a green or a square or a rotary or something as a focal point, and that was really the focal point down there. Everything surrounded it.
The flats remains the focal point of village life, where the holiday season is welcomed with the lighting of the beautiful 35-foot spruce tree and a festive holiday gala. Throughout the changing seasons of the year, flowering plants, local art, and unique shops beckon visitors to celebrate community life. Beyond the flats, residents and visitors enjoy the varied activities and services that the historic Hazard Memorial Library and Neighborhood Guild offer.
I love the fact that here we are in a small community, living close to people, and yet there's lots of nature all over the place. For me, it's really important to live in a place where you can get to know the people around you rather than being anonymous. Here in Peastale, you can go into stores and know the people that are serving you, and that's important to me.
Peastale's mills remain prominent fixtures in the community, kept in excellent condition by their owners, and featuring Peastale's gorgeous granite stone, they offer prime space for artist studios, entertainment venues, and manufacturing, office, and commercial uses. The redevelopment of these beautiful mills opens the door to opportunity for those who appreciate their unique architecture, historic significance, and attractive location.
I believe that there's a lot of potential in Peastale. There's a lot of people moving into the community, and there's a lot of interest in improving the community, and so there's a chance for businesses to come here and make a mark and get established and be successful.
Peastale has this great little small village feel to it. You know, it basically surrounds a rotary, so traffic-wise, you drive around the village in a heartbeat, and you can walk to everywhere. Again, very small and contained, but it just has a great feel of this old architecture. I just liked, there was kind of a funky feel to Peastale.
There seems to be a lot of heart and soul and appreciation for the little village. The village of Peastale is very receptive to improvements in the revitalization process, and I'm very, very pleased by their support.
Peastale, a quaint coastal mill village whose vibrancy is attracting new businesses, artists, and residents. Individuals who live and work in Peastale experience a true community spirit, a sense of belonging, a sense of place. The revitalization of this historic mill village continues. New businesses, artists, and residents are invited to be part of this exciting transformation. For more information, visit www.pestale.net or call 401-783-0076.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move to seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is unanimous. This meeting is adjourned at 11:07. Good night.